Everything's good.
Ross, lower the camera, we see you.
You don't want to see me.
Okay. That's beautiful.
There we go. Now I gotta comb the hair, Peter.
All eighty-four of them.
It's seven o'clock. Seven o'clock. Okay. All right. It is seven o'clock. Time for our council meeting. We'll go ahead and start our meeting. Call our meeting to order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and who stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kate. Here.
Here.
Councilor Ross.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. First up is our audience of citizens. So we'll go ahead and open that up to whoever wishes to speak on topics before us or topics that are not before us. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
I got a couple people. Yeah, you'll be number three. You don't need to sign up. I'll just call you in order. Yeah, we got it. We got it. First on the list, though, is Bob Zippadelli. What up, Bob?
Can you hear me? It's okay.
Gotcha.
Well, I'm not an employee of the town. I'm here strictly as a volunteer. Try to do my part. And I'm here to just talk a little bit about the wall at the old Peck Library, which is now being used by Historical Society. I got involved driving by, which I go that way almost every day, up and down on Main Street. And and I saw how the wall was in such bad shape. I think it goes really back about four years now, where they had an erosion of the wall in about five different places. So the stone in five different places eroded down, so it left gaping holes on the wall. So I took it upon myself to call, you know, facilities and and got somebody. And they went up there and what they did was it helped to a degree because it made the the wall more solid. But they filled in all of the holes with cement. So, of course, it doesn't really look that great because the white cement along a wall that's black in color of stone. But anyway, so from that point, I was trying to help people from the town by reaching out to masonry people, getting ads out of the newspaper, talking to some people that had masonry people like Earl Wicklin and others in town. And once, once they got over to see the wall on Peck Street, Peckham and May, it's an enormous job because it's it's a a large wall. It's 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 quite high and it's it's long in length. So for some of the little small masonry guys, this was something too big for them to handle. But just try to give you an idea. I was talking to Mike from Dairy Queen and he he put in a three-sided wall on his building, not the back, but two sides and the front. And that little wall on his building cost thirty thousand dollars. So the estimate that I got from a company out of Durham, which I'm going to leave with the console, you know, it's the high fifties, their estimate to do work on on the wall. So when I was a kid back in the forties, and I'm talking about seventy-five years ago, believe it or not, I was like nine, ten years old. My cousin and I used to go to that wall, sit on it almost every day. And we used to play games. All we needed was a sheet of paper and a pencil. And to show you how simple it was, one of us would take the cars that went up Main Street and the other one would take the cars coming down Main Street. So whoever would win the contest would be the first one that would reach certain number of cars. And we did the same thing with Chevys and Fords. So back in the forties, there wasn't much to do. But that's when I really got to have a strong feeling about the wall. Are there any questions before I pass on to the council pitchers and and a written proposal that? No questions? Not that I'd be able to answer them anyways. It's a little bit out of my field.
Pass Mike thirty thousand. And these are the pictures of how the wall looks now. And this is the brochure, which I'll leave with you. This is who I found to be like the best. So. So that's it. Well done.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Bob.
Bye, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Always. Oh, I see. Oh, yeah. Okay, I remember. Yeah. Yeah. Kind of looks kind of hideous. Very nice looking. There you go. Okay, next we have Donna Bovee. Hi, Don.
How are you?
Good.
See everybody? Donna Bovee, eighty-five Stupelview Drive, Berlin. I'm here representing Parks and Rec Commission. Back in early December, I came here and we talked about the Demore Dinda Bittner Junior Pool over in East Berlin. We shared some pictures and on the conditions of the pool. And we talked about staffing and staffing has become a major issue nationally to get lifeguards, supervisory lifeguards with water safety instruction for swim lessons and assistant directors, et cetera, to run pools in the summertime. For most towns, they they have them, but every town is, and again, this is a national problem, not even a Connecticut problem, but you can't get staff. So I said I would update you and I was going to update you in March. But we decided to try and extend applications to try and encourage more people to submit an application to become lifeguard or water safety instructors, et cetera. And unfortunately, we haven't had one bite for the last couple of months.
No.
So from a Parks and Rec Commission and obviously the staff is in agreement and you just cannot operate two pools during the summer with the current staff that we have. We're not going to get any more staff. Towns or even, you know, New Britain goes on the morning announcements at the high school, at our high school, to try and get lifeguards. We've done that as well. But, you know, that's how bad it is. So we have enough staff to operate Percival fully, seven days a week, full swim instructions. We have, you know, the water safety instructors that have been properly certified. That's all set and we can do that. Unfortunately, we cannot open the Demore Dinda Pool. Some people will question why we can't open that one. Percival's bigger. You can handle more people there. We can certainly take the people that attended these Berlin pool last few years and even this past summer post COVID. We shared with you how the numbers have come down, especially at that pool. We could take all the nine hundred visits that happened last year, which isn't that many. That's an average of nineteen people a day at that pool. We can take all that and handle it at Percival. Percival's numbers are down, but not as dramatic if you look at them. So I wanted to update you. I, you know, we're all disappointed. But that is, that's the facts of what we're all up against. And, you know, some people will ask why they're not becoming lifeguards. You know, kids, they get out of college in May, early May, they're gonna, if they're gonna work, they're gonna start a job then. We don't open up until right after school closes, so mid-June. And we only stay open till mid-August because they all have to get back to college. Colleges now start earlier. So we're, you know, we're open six to eight weeks, just like every town pool. And, you know, they just have better offers. They can be a waiter, waitress. They don't have to go through certification and pay three hundred dollars to become certified to be a lifeguard. And then it's more money to get water safety instruction and beyond that. So we're lucky. We have twelve people that we'll have for the eight-week period. Percival, again, different levels, and we'll be able to offer everything that we did. It's just going to be at one location. Yes.
Is there a age requirement for lifeguards?
So it's a, well, age requirement, you need certification. So sixteen and above.
Be sixteen.
Most of them don't complete the certification till seventeen, eighteen. And for a lifeguard, you know, that's okay. For supervisory, you really want someone that's been a lifeguard for a year or two, mature enough and things like that. So.
And does the town pay for their certification?
Yeah, so we talk.
They pay out of their pocket.
We don't pay for the certification. Towns had them check even, you know, with the Parks and Rec and everything, make sure we weren't. So now they don't do that. But I said, maybe that's something that we should do. But quite frankly, even the certifications are way down as far as, you know, we talked to the Red Cross. People aren't becoming certified. And if they are, okay, everybody knows, Jen, right?
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Jen.
We do offer recertification to our current employees.
Right. Gotcha.
They have to be certified to come and be hired by us, but once they are hired by us, our assistant, our office director offers a recertification throughout the summer and allows them to get their time for hours in so they can be used.
Sure.
We can maintain.
Right, right.
We, yeah, to keep the people that we have, and most of them, all of them are returning from last year. So, yeah, that, absolutely. So, you know, that's where we are.
Donna, I have a quick question. I apologize for not being there, but you don't want me there. Take my word for it. Um, do you normally fill these spots in terms of employment by this time of year or is it by May? I mean, is there a chance to be able to fill that those spots? I know that across the board, employment is an issue. Excuse me. Um, I was just curious if you normally by this time of year have all the guards that you need and workers that you need for both pools.
We, you know, if
I'm just wondering.
Applications, you know, we'd go back. We could reverse this decision. There's there's not a lot of prep that we need to get the pool ready. The pool's there. But we haven't had any applications in a couple of months.
Our hiring system, our hiring season is typically start in January, February, and, you know, get it out there. It's very similar to when other towns are. So it's, it's, you know, it is kind of tail end. We did push it a little further to see if we could gain any interest. And the, and the problem isn't necessarily hiring the sixteen-year-old lifeguards. Our biggest problem is our older people that can be supervisors. We can't have a sixteen-year-old lifeguard who just became a lifeguard last year, all of a sudden in charge of East Berlin School on a day. God forbid, there's an emergency. They're just, they're not ready yet. And we don't have enough of those older kids. We had a group of five supervisors that were fantastic. We've lost three to them to college internships. So that's kind of where we're really lacking on the staffing.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, so I just wanted to alert you to that, you know, the Parks and Rec Commission, as we look at that in our capital budget, we have the minor replacement at the Demore Dinda Pool. But we're gonna really look at that because, you know, we're, they're pretty good stewards of money. And so we do know that the numbers are down at Demore Dinda. Like I said, average was nineteen per day. It's only open Monday through Friday last year because of staffing. And it's forty-eight days. So we intend to look at structure of the pool, understand all the repairs that need to be made to it. I gave you pictures last December. We have them in case you need them again. But we're gonna, you know, we're gonna revisit that, throw that around, also engage people in East Berlin. If there are ideas, thoughts, any event that we couldn't open that pool, you know, for whatever reason or decide or recommend it to the council, not to them, but we would welcome ideas from people in East Berlin especially, what to do with that area. You know, we have some thoughts. It also entails, you know, just thinking broader spectrum, parks, records, whatever counteroffer. Let us know.
Thank you, Donna, for that. Sorry to hear that, but I'm glad we have the staff for Percival.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a good thing. Sounds like, and under the circumstances, yeah. So that's, that's a good thing. Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's the only two, the other, you're up, sir. Perfect timing. Look at that. Walk right through the door.
I apologize. My son was being a little unruly.
Oh, no, that's okay. We've all been there. We get it.
Yeah. So I, some of you may remember my name is Justin Fritz. I'm a potential business looking to come to Berlin. And I wanted to come back and speak to you guys further and provide you guys with some materials on our business, our business structure, and then kind of the timeline that's associated with our project, just because we're on a deadline with the state to be operational and have our business operations in place. So that's where it's paramount for us to try and find a location rather quickly. And then, you know, get up and operational as quickly as possible before our licenses become invalid at that point. So every license in the state is on a different timeline, depending upon when they were started, when they got drawn, when they started the process with the state. So every license is a little different, but you know, we're one of the last licenses that were approved for provisional, which would be this time next year. So we have to be up and operational with our doors open by the end of March.
Okay.
In twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four. Twenty-four?
Twenty-four. Yeah, we're in twenty-three.
You missed it. You missed it. No, 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 no.
So that, that's where, like, trying to, I know your guys' moratorium is up here at the, at the end of May. So I know I wanted to just kind of put it on your guys' radar, kind of help answering your questions you might have. I know you had a couple of attorneys and some other individuals come up and speak to you in January, which alluded to a lot of the process and the differentiation. And, you know, kind of where each type of license sits in the supply chain. And then, you know, kind of the security aspect that goes with that. So in here, I provided a little overview on our company and I've included the state security statutes, which every license has to abide by and then exceed. So I just want to leave you with those and hopefully I can come back and talk to you guys further as you make your decisions on this process, as we are very interested in coming to Berlin.
Sure.
If.
It was approved. Do you have any locations in mind in town yet?
Yeah. So there are a few locations that we're looking at that are currently for sale and currently off market. So that's where, you know, the sooner we can come to an answer where the city would be receptive to our business, the sooner we can purchase the land and move forward on our project.
Well, how many square foot of facility?
So we have, we would have anywhere between four and five licenses occupying our facility and doing all the middle of the supply chain work. And that, we would start with about ten to fifteen thousand square feet and look to double that within two years. Just simply accounting for market growth and everything else that goes with the business as it grows.
And you, you were a packager?
Yeah. So our, our license is packaging and distribution and transportation.
Oh, okay.
And then we also will have a food and beverage license, manufacturing food and beverage products. And then we're also looking at a product manufacturing license, which would be creating oils and other manufactured type products out of raw product from growers.
Okay. And you would deliver to the dispensaries or to the?
Yeah. So we would, we'd be bringing product in, manufacturing products, and then housing them and then distributing them to every retail location in the state as they, you know, order our, our particular product lines.
Gotcha. Okay.
Leave these guys with you. Our contact information is in there as well. And you can also find us on LinkedIn as well if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Julia?
Hello, everyone. I'm Julia Dennis, one fifteen Norton Road. I am the Chair of the Board of Ed. I just wanted to come this evening and just respond and provide clarity around the question about how are our kids doing? What's the return on investment? And I do want to state that the board does have an obligation to students, families, and the taxpayers. We do take this serious. It's shown throughout the year, but I think it'll be worth letting you know specifically where it is if you do want to go back. Mark, I know when we spoke at some point last week, we started talking about it. I just couldn't remember off the top of my head where it was and what the data was to support it. So I didn't want to speak directly to it, but I went through the data today. So first off, during the budget process, that's a very long process for the board. So to start bringing in student achievement data with that, that would make it even longer. Going through student achievement data takes a very long time. So that's why it's not coupled in with our budget presentations. I am going to share some highlights, where to find the information. So it was stated in the meeting that money doesn't equal better students. I will say money does produce far better opportunities and options for all students to learn. All students are different. They all learn different. And where we are going as a society is changing, so we need to make sure we're, you know, keeping up with that. It was also stated that something around an elementary school assistant principal salary being greater than the police chief's. We haven't had elementary school assistant principals in a number of years. We eliminated those positions. I don't remember how many years ago, but they've been gone for, for at least three years now, if not closer to five. We also eliminated an assistant principal at the middle school. And those increases for administrators do not exceed the town side increases or the overall other bargaining group increases that are negotiated. And then, so the November twenty-eighth meeting, we have, we went over the continuous improvement plan. So that just kind of talks about the goals and where we want to go. The December twelfth meeting was very long and we went through all the student achievement reports. So all the data that is presented in that meeting, which you can go back and reference, discusses our town, the state, the DURG, those are the district reference groups of other socioeconomic, when looking at student achievement data, you want to look at the DURG, not, you know, running into other towns because they are going to outperform and that's why there are certain DURGs. So that's the most accurate way to look at the data. And then it also disaggregates the data even further to students with needs and other other subgroups. The, the presentation and the report highlights both aggregated and disaggregated data with compelling evidence that students are doing well and the school district is really striving for excellence. It goes over ELA, that's your English Language Arts, math, NGSS, that's a National Science, as well as SAT. After each report, it goes over the ongoing work and the next steps to improve. So we're not just saying, great job, check a box, move on. There's actionable steps so the school board can hold, you know, the district performance accountable, grounded by the data. So the ELA data for twenty, all of this is for twenty twenty-two. There's, so for the DURGs, there's twenty-four DURGs. We, for ELA, we were ten out of twenty-four. For math, eleven out of twenty-four. NGSS, the science, ten out of twenty-four. So above, above the average, the SAT reading and writing scores dropped in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two as expected, as well as throughout the state. However, we are still above the benchmark in the state. The benchmark is four eighty. The state was five oh one. Berlin was five twenty-two. That's just for the reading and writing portion. So that, that is very good considering the pandemic. And then for DURG, for the SAT reading and writing, we are ten out of twenty-four. For SAT math, the state averages four eighty-six. Berlin is five sixteen. This, this particularly was interesting to me. And in twenty nineteen, before the pandemic, we were five sixteen. In twenty twenty, we dropped down to five twelve, twenty twenty-one, five oh one. Twenty twenty-two, we are back up. So our SAT data is indicating that we are pushing our students and holding them to high standards. For our DURG performance, we are seven out of twenty-four. So we are, you know, really in the top right there. Other things that are highlighted in that report, again, it's very long and this is just like a quick snapshot. We have nineteen AP course offerings. AP scores are shown. They did drop slightly. But again, not anything concerning that's going to impact students negatively. We offer sixteen additional college credit courses. So we have a total of thirty-five college credit courses total. The report also talks about graduation rates, post-secondary rates, post-secondary plans. So if you are interested, BHSTV YouTube channel, we have our board meetings. At every board meeting, our student board reps show a report to highlight things other than standardized testing that happens, which I think is important for taxpayers to see as well, to see all the great opportunities that students have. Individual schools have monthly reports. All of our schools have monthly reports. And then we also show the concerts, performance, athletic events. All the schools have social media pages, which highlight various opportunities for all. And then just a few other things. We've really worked hard to offer courses that are going to cater to the future and the needs of our community and the demand of the workforce. We have workforce and career readiness, opportunities and trips. We've added a CNA course, other courses. Over seventy-six percent of winter sport, sport athletes were awarded academic achievement awards. We were actually highlighted by WTNH Today for something great. And every board meeting, we invite students in to share things that are being learned throughout the district. So I hope this information is helpful and thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
So that was a December meeting?
Yes.
Yes, December twelfth, so if you go to BHS TV on YouTube, put it December twelfth. It's really long. I just, if my report was long, this is probably a few hours.
Oh.
But it's all there.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I can put the report. Yep. So yeah.
Yeah, our DURG is uh
Donna, I'm sorry. Do you have your microphone on?
Yep, my, my apologies. Um, so I was just asking um if, if the President of the Board could mention what some of the other towns are that were being compared to. So the ten out of twenty-four, there were towns like Branford, Clinton, Colchester, Cromwell. Southington is in our DURG. Um, is that right?
Southington, Rocky Hill, North Haven, Old Stabrook, East Granby, Southington, Colchester, Eastlime, Waterford, Berlin, Weathersfield, Shelton, East Hampton, Watertown, Bethel, Milford, Cromwell, Branford, Clinton, Newington, Wallingford, Ledger, New Milford and Windsor.
Break the dirt.
Anything else? Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate that. Um, okay, we're telling the audience of citizens. Yes, sir.
Seem of Magliel seventy-eight Hickory Hill Road. Um, let's go back in history. When I was on the Board of Finance, my tenure of Board of Finance for four years, when we took over in our first year, we had to deal with reevaluation. It wasn't as bad as this year. It was approximately maybe five percent or six percent. Don't quote me on it, but that's what I remember. And we had to do the budget. In the budget process, we funded some capital equipment that we needed desperately. And we provided a tax, a tax increase on top of the um reevaluation. But we also funded the Board of Education with the contractual obligation of three percent. So the Board of Education was not hurt during the reevaluation. At that time, things went crazy. Certain members of the parties, but the Republican Party decided to under Dave, Dave Seer, decided to do a, a protest with acts of tax signs and campaigned against the budget. They said that reevaluation plus the tax increase was too high and it was splattered all over town. Acts of tax. And it was more of a campaign against the Board of Finance, but we still tore guns. The end of the day, the budget failed, but then there was, we, we, we came together with the, with the council. We came up with an agreement and it did finally pass. So fast forward to today, we have an eighteen, maybe fifteen to eighteen percent increase in property values. And at that time, five years ago, we also had a budget surplus. I think it was around one point two million dollars. And I remember, and my memory is good, even though I'm older, five years ago, that the council went to do um give the budget presentation to the senior center. And they, the, they said, well, you know, they talked about the surplus and they said, I wish we can give you a tax refund. But unfortunately, we can't give a tax refund because only the state of Connecticut can do that. So now we're going to go to today. You know, we, we could throw budget surplus numbers around. Some people tell me it's four percent or, I mean, four million dollars or four point two at the end of the fiscal year. We, the Board of Finance cut on Board of Ed to a place where they can't even fit their contractual obligations. And our town residents are going with an eighteen percent increase on top of the budget, which is about a point eight. So what I suggest, and I'm just a private citizen now and a taxpayer, what I suggest is that we take that surplus money we have now, because I think we should use it to give some tax relief, not to the, to the residents, to the residents, but also use five hundred and ninety thousand of it to make it eight four two percent for the Board of Education, where at least we cover the contractual obligations. Because the worst thing we could do, if you have a child and they love their kindergarten teacher, for example, we want to really lay off a kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, whatever, when you don't make the contractual obligations. So you take that four point two million dollars and you give it back to the taxpayers, give it back to the citizen. It's sort of like a rebate, but through a tax relief. And I know I, I saw the console tape or Board of Finance tape, but the mayor asked, can we spread that reevaluation out for two, three years? Speaking as a taxpayer, I'd rather feel the pain now than spread it out for two or three years. I mean, there's pros and cons.
Yeah.
Credit mark.
No, yeah.
Trying, but
Yeah.
I'm one of those guys.
Trying anything, yeah.
I'm one of those guys. Just give me the pain and get it over with.
Probably what's going to happen, but whatever. Yeah, so.
But I bumped into a fellow at CBS when I was picking up some stuff and he said to me, he said, eighteen percent and then a tax increase of point eight. Can't the town do anything about it? And so I'm asking you, send it back to the Board of Finance. I know you have plans with that four million dollars and the plans are great. I mean, we need to renovate the police station. We need to fix the schools. We've been talking. When I was on the Board of Finance, we were talking about the police station too. We were, we had a lot of bond in it, but the bond is dropping now. And, and put, if people wanted to renovate the police station, put it out to referendum. But give the people in this community a little tax break because this is eighteen percent is crazy. I mean, we all are going to feel the pain. Everybody in the council that owns a house is going to feel the pain. Okay, there's no, there's no way around feeling the pain. But I don't think we should feel that point eight pain when we're sitting on a sizable surplus. So I'm asking the council, send it back to the Board of Finance or have a joint meeting and try to do something with that surplus. Make the Board of Education whole. And I understand, you know, Sal came out with those charts with, you know, they have all these surplus money. You know what? The towns had surplus money. E- every year that I served on the Board of Finance, we had surplus. We use that surplus money to, we bought capital items. It's not like we didn't use that surplus money for a good reason. We did. And anyway, they gave people a tax break by buying that surplus money in cash. We did that with the corporation of the council. We all worked together to buy it and we did buy a lot of great things. But now this is not the time to use that money. But the Board of Education, let me give you a little history. When the Board of Education has a surplus money, at least that happened when I was Chairman of the Board of Finance. We sat together with the Board of Education because they don't have capital items. All the capital gets taken out of their budget. They may have a little bit. I don't know about this year's budget, but under our budgets, they didn't have. So we use that money. We gave them a one percent account, which we can do that legally. And we did the gymnasium floors. We did a blast classroom. We did a couple of things. And I think last year, the Board of Finance did something with them on a one percent account too. So the money gets reinvested in the schools, but they still give us back money. So I'm asking the council, you know, if you really want to do the right thing, send it back to Board of Finance, give them some direction and let's use that surplus money and give everybody a little tax break, which we all needed this year. Because I don't know about you, but this inflation is killing everybody. Trust me. We all feel that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else at the? Yes, sir. I hope both of you are going to speak. Oh, come on. Okay. Yes, come on. Yeah, yeah.
Screeching. Peter Zerbozo one five eight.
He is paying attention though. I see that. He's definitely paying attention.
Elwood Road.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo the comments from the previous speaker. I, I think during this budget process, we kind of uh saw commentary from the Board of Finance emphasizing that the Board of Education had a surplus. Um, and this was also cited at the end of the last town council meeting. And you know, that's true. And the town also has a surplus, you know, through a Freedom of Information request. As of March twenty twenty-three, the town is currently operating with a two point two million dollar operating surplus. I don't know what the projected surplus is, but there seem to be numbers floating around that it might be the four million dollar range. I just think that it's a little disingenuous to be attacking one side of the town's operations, i.e. the Board of Education for having a surplus, while the town itself has a surplus magnitudes larger. Um, and I also take concern that when the Board of Finance was asked about this, they refused to answer the question. And I don't know if that's because it comes from an unwillingness to answer the question or if they just didn't have the information in front of them. But either way, it, it's not a great look. So I'm simply asking you as the town council and as the mayor, who has the information in front of them, to kind of approach that surplus and kind of discuss what, in the, in the current iteration of the budget, we're going to walk away with a point eight six mil rate increase and kind of slightly underfund the Board of Education. So where is that surplus money going? What is the projected surplus? And how did the Board of Finance finally decide to allocate it? And how will you, as the council, alter it or decide to allocate it? Because as it was said earlier, with the inflation being, you know, I don't know, it's like six percent still to this day. That's a huge burden on taxpayers, especially those who are on fixed income. And I think that if there is surplus, it needs to be dedicated to pushing it down in the mill rate, if it's possible. Because I don't think the citizens of this town can really take any more, you know, financial pressure, as you know. So thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. We're going to have a little, so when we get to the budget presentation shortly, we're, we're going to have a, a talk by Kevin Delaney about the surpluses and as former Chair of the Board of Finance knows, the surplus, just briefly over the last few years, has been allocated to town and Board of Ed projects. Um, so the Board of Ed has a fifty million dollar approximately operating budget. And then another ten million or so goes to projects. You know, we've, we've all the COVID money this year, the, I think, what, five million dollars? I think we only took seven hundred thousand out last year is going to the Willard HVAC project for the school system and for the town. I mean, so the surplus for the last, I think, three years has been allocated to Board of Ed capital projects and town projects. So it's not been one-sided. It's been kind of down the middle. Um, so, and by taking, we'll stay tuned tonight, but by taking the capital out of the budget, um, the more we take out for the budget year, but it's going to lower the mill rate and that's the relief we're looking to do. So stay tuned for tonight. It's not over yet and it's certainly not over until after the referendum either. So, you know, remember, this is a proposed budget. Uh, it's not finalized. It's going to the, it's going to the voters, no matter what we do tonight. And just understand tonight too, that and by charter, we have only three options. The council, we can lower the budget. We can vote to send it forward to the referendum or we could reject it. If we reject it, we go back to the Board of Finance with a joint meeting. And then I think we need nine, nine votes to, um, if we wanted to, if we wanted to increase it, we'd have to go back to the Board of Finance to increase it with at least a majority of nine votes with the two, with the two bodies combined. So, um, that's sort of where we're at, but we'll talk about that in a minute when we get to the, we're almost to the, the budget part. And I appreciate all the, all the input because that's what we want to hear. We want to hear from everyone. Uh, okay. So any, I, I, any other comments? Yes. Oh, yeah. Come on up. Sure, of course. Sorry. Yeah, absolutely. And then we'll go to Zoom too, if anybody's on Zoom. Don't want to forget our Zoom folks.
Ben Morgan, five sixty-one Percival Ave.
How are you?
Are you? Uh, tonight I just urge that you take a closer look inside our schools. As a parent of an eighth grader and a school volunteer, what I see when I look inside our schools is top educators, opportunities for kids to learn with technology, resources for at-risk and special needs learners, opportunities for kids to do what they love in school and after school. And a community of, of professionals that really care about our kids. I also see educators and administrators stretched thin to get it all done. Um, minimal upgrades to some of the physical spaces and more and more needs for mental health resources for our kids. When the Board of Education approved the five point eight four percent budget increase, they were looking inside our schools at the resources needed for our kids and for our schools, not just to maintain where we are, but to thrive. In recent weeks, that number has been brought down to three percent by the Board of Finance. Um, and with that, we all know there will be critical cuts. One point four million in cuts, to be specific. There are many different opinions on how much this town cares about those cuts. As a parent volunteer and a taxpayer, I care that class sizes will increase. Reading and math paraprofessionals and specialists that provide one-to-one support to our students will no longer be employed. Athletes may have to pay to play, which creates a huge equity issue. And there will be no consistent building substitutes. That list goes on. Our town can do better. Perspective residents look to move to a town that provides excellence in education. The more we cut, the more we lose on all levels. Berlin will simply not draw in young families if we are a community that can't invest in the value of its educational system. We have a good school system, but it needs proper funding now to be competitive and properly resourced in the years to come. Three percent will not do that. It's senseless to undercut schools when they ask is reasonable and ensures no cuts to staff or programs we currently have available. Stop nickeling and diming our children, our teachers and our administrators. Um, we should all take a look inside our schools and care more about what is needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Hello. How are you?
I'm El DeMangelo, eighty-six Devonshire Way. I know I've been showing up at these meetings just the right time during budget season. Amazing how that happens. Think if the five point eight four percent had passed, then there'd be no worries. There's, there'd be no audience and we'd watch it through Zoom, which, by the way, I love the technology. We could go back and we play videos over and over. So it's good to, um, to have that. So I wasn't sure about if you could raise anything today. So I'm glad that you explained the guidelines. But what I am here for is to, is for, in support of the Board of Ed. And to really ask you to consider, what are the reasons why you're here, why you're elected? Are you here to balance a budget? Are you here to create a new, um, new spaces, new buildings, new, um, businesses coming in? Are you here to make sure that all of the children that are in this town are actually getting the right education and the best education they can get? How can they get that education? If the resources aren't there, if they're being, you know, cut? Um, are you here because you were elected and this is where you're at? I don't know what your motivation is for why you're here. But I would hope that you would take some time, really look at what is most important for the town, what is most important for our children. I have a, a senior in high school and I have one more that is going to go into high school next year as a freshman. So I will be part and continue even beyond when they've actually moved on from education. I am passionate about education and making sure that all of our students have the best opportunity possible. It's one of the reasons why I do live in this town. And I would hope that you would recognize all of the work that is being done to the schools. The five point eight four percent budget that was put in place was not put in place just because we were throwing out a number. The Board of Ed, you know, um, the superintendent put out a proposal that some of us parents really did not agree with. How can you cut a lead teacher at the middle school? That is the most traumatic place for teenagers as they're trying to find their way, especially during, during the pandemic where they're still suffering and still trying to figure out there's inequities with learning disabilities. You know, everyone's trying to come back to the new normal of what it might look like. So we fought that and thankfully, the budget was increased and all of the teachers and positions that were cut came back. But that happened just to see that Board of Finance did not recognize the value. And, and they did not recognize the value of what was being put in place from the Board of Ed. A three percent increase, we all know is not going to be sufficient. And I, again, I have recollections back to three years ago when the percent approved was one point two five. The schools were decimated. And all of a sudden, parents were waking up and saying like, what happened? Or where's the counselor? Where's this? Where's that? We're like, where were you at the meetings? You were not there. So it just kind of slipped by. And it was, it was traumatic and it was a lot of, we're still haven't fully recovered from that. Costs have increased. Assuming that you can have a budget with contractual obligations, even that, you know, there's, um, the teachers are unionized, et cetera. There are certain obligations that have to be met. And, um, resources need to be added based on where we have been. To think that it can be stable, that's just not going to be the case and it isn't the case. So I really do ask you to consider why you're here. So, I really do ask you to consider why you're here, what it is that you value, and to make the hard decision. The hard decision may be that us taxpayers are gonna have to take on a little bit more. And I've said this before, I'm willing to do that. You know, Sam brought up some good suggestions. I don't know, I don't know those numbers and those specifics to what extent they can be done. But you might need to make a hard decision. And the hard decision may be to send it back so that it can have the appropriate adjustment made. The hard decision may be to accept it and send it on to referendum so that us parents who are passionate about this can show you that, no, it is gonna be too low, and it needs to go back to the drawing board. But something has to be done, because say 3% is gonna decimate our schools, our children, and, and it's just not gonna be a good situation for Berlin. Please consider why you're here.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here? Yes, ma'am. Hello. Hi.
Wanted to follow up on what Imelda said, say that, you know, I'm sure you all have your reasons for being here, but ultimately, you're supposed to work as taxpayers. And we are sitting here, even the people who are arguing for lower taxes are still saying Board of Ed needs to be fully funded. So, if your job is to listen to us, please do so.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome. How are we doing?
Cordell Budria, 115 Skinner Road. Just want to speak to Imelda and Megan and Jen, you know, echo today about supporting our schools. The budget, as passed by BOF, what, school side, represents a $1.4 million undercut to sustain and fully fund our schools. That's dramatic. I think we need to pay specific attention to what that will do. And the boards put out weird cuts that represent harm that that causes. I think I can speak for everybody here, and I say that we don't want to see that harm flow through schools. We have to be better, and I think this speaks to need to have vision. We, as community, truly embrace and support our schools. This budget, as it's currently before the council now, lacks that vision. Excludes capacity for schools to be competitive, be all that they can be, and to attract younger families. We can't lose sight of the fact that if we don't add that money back, we are hurting future generations. And I will leave it at that.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience tonight? Hearing none. Zoom, do we have folks on Zoom, Kate?
I don't see anyone whose hand is raised or who have unmuted themselves.
Could you show, is there a way to put everyone on screen anymore?
Nope.
How come? We should be able to see who's on screen, I'd like to see that. We can't do that? Can we fix that?
Not that we don't want to see Peter all night, but, no, well. Or me, or me, for that matter.
Great, Donna, you and Peter are great on there, but I would like to see who's online, just to note this.
I don't want to see Peter all night either, but.
You know, it's interesting, Mark, because I'm able to see the gallery.
Oh, you can't.
I can.
Except for us.
No, you're there, too, and if I put it on speaker view, then I can see,
Yeah.
you know, the council, and I still at the top of my screen, I can see who's on Zoom. Okay, you should be able to do that, I don't understand why you can't.
I, I'm sorry, but according to IT,
Yes.
who knows a lot more than I do. No.
So, we had it before, though.
Yeah, we used to always have it.
No. On to a new setup.
Okay.
We are trying to come up with a foolproof idiot-proof system. Every time, I'm tired of having technology problems. Donna can't hear, somebody else can't hear.
I'm with you on that.
Well, it's horrible, what can we tell you?
One switch, and it comes on.
Yeah.
So, it, it just records everything and runs smoothly. So, that new system you put in place has only the speaker view.
So, I, I get it, we, we certainly want to hear and be heard, but.
George Simmons, Simon's, excuse me. Tim Grady, Kevin Delaney.
Tablets in front of you, and maybe you have.
Oh, maybe that.
Yeah, exactly.
If you sign on that, where you can, you'll be able to see.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Arosh, we didn't know that, though.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I only say that because, and I know you've worked hard at this, and I appreciate the improvement, but I've been to many, many different towns in the last two years, and I, I don't know why, sometimes ours is better, sometimes ours is worse, but I do see people on the screen that are, that are on the.
We're fixing it for zero.
Huh?
That's the difference.
Well, maybe we, maybe we need to spend some money. I don't. Wow, would you like that? You like that?
I did, I think that's a great idea.
As long as it's reasonable, yes, now, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out, yeah. Okay, and so is there, no one on Zoom? Okay, all right, thank, thank you all very much, appreciate the comments. We'll, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we'll just go on to Mayor's update. Just two quick things, and then we'll get to our agenda. Just, there's a proclamation that, from, it's American Public Health Association has proclaimed, and this is from our health department, has proclaimed April 3rd through April 9th, 2023, as National Public Health Week. This year's theme, centering and celebrating cultures and health, feeling like we belong, being a part of our communities, and fostering cultural connection supports our health and the quality of our lives. By building healthier, stronger, and safer places to live, the United States can be the healthiest nation in one generation. For 28 years, the annual celebration of National Public Health Week reminds us of the fundamental role that our own state and local health departments play every day in the health of our communities. The Health District, in partnership with the four towns, has been dedicated and driven to reduce morbidity and mortality from COVID-19 over the last three years. The town of Berlin, together with its neighboring towns of Rocky Hill, Newington, Weathersfield, receives quality public health service through its regional health department, the Central Connecticut Health District, now in its 27th year of service, so. We do proclaim April 3rd to 9th, National Public Health Week, and we encourage our citizens to, to join in acknowledging the critical role of public health in prevention and in helping individuals and communities to achieve and maintain good health, dated today's date. So, yeah, we, that's important, and we do help, you know, our Central Connecticut Health District is, is great, and they do help us with a lot of, a lot of. We do, yes, we do, that's right, I forgot, Ray, I'm sorry. Forgot you're on the board, silly me. That, that's for sure, yes.
On behalf of Charlie Brown, who's Director of Health, but want to accept it. And I also want to just remind everybody that the other two Berlin residents members are basically Lisa Pines, who's downstairs at Wetlands tonight, and Dr. Pat Chekhov. And as you know, last two weeks ago, Charlie Brown gave a very comprehensive invitation of what the programs are for public health. I just want to remind everybody, because I have a bias. Drinking water and sewage are one of the important parts for public health protection, has been my whole career. Appreciate the great support, you're very good. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Ray.
So, gotta get back to that Walkathon thing, too, what happened with that?
That's gonna happen in May.
Is it happening in May? Oh, good, because we can't let, didn't Rocky Hill beat us? That's not right. I think we won, didn't we win like three or four years in a row?
Yeah.
Oh, we gotta get back to that. One real quick thing, I just wanted to acknowledge. Wanted to acknowledge, I got, I saw this email, which is a great testament to the town, to our town staff, right, from, this was from Stan Kim in East Berlin. They wanted to take a minute and call out praise for the town of Berlin, particularly the building department. The gentleman, he's the VP of Sales and Marketing and Project Manager over there. He's been in the construction industry for 30 years, straddling the border of Mass and Connecticut. He was employed by Stan Kim Residence here in East Berlin about four years ago. And they found out he had a construction pedigree and decided to let him run some of the projects. So, he said he's worked in many different towns over the years. I wanted to offer sincere compliment and thanks to the group. He said, if something is asked, it is always answered with detail. If a component of the building is lacking, it is not looked at for punishment or penance, only reasoned correction. He said, these types of principled, our, our building department, these types of principled individuals have created not only a builder's atmosphere, but a business expansion environment that needs not fear the stifling shackles of an overly burdensome regulatory agency. Wow, okay, that's quite a statement. But that's great to hear, we're always encouraged and guided and grateful for our town and our employees, John Massia, Frank Van Linter, Steve Wozniak, Jim Horrible, Maureen Guste, Jeff Toussaint, Rich Kopp, Julie Benjamin, and Chris Edge. So, that's great to hear of a business in town that's expanding and doing projects to call out our, our building department, and that's, that's always good to hear. So, we appreciate that. And two other quick things. See, you know, I, I realize, I think somebody mentioned it when they spoke, but I, I realized that earlier this week that we usually make a presentation at the Senior Center for the budget, because a lot of, sometimes, you know, we, I think we had it at McGee this year, so we had hoped some seniors would be there, and we usually hold it, hold it early enough for that to happen. We, we, we miss and not planning one at the Senior Center, so maybe Arosh, we can get with Tina and, and maybe just do a quick hour, just a quick one, just so if they have questions before, before the, huh?
We had two people show up last time, and we decided.
At the Senior Center?
Yes.
No, I thought there was more, what? Oh, did she do it? She did? Okay, all right, we could ask her, I, I just, you know, but, no, that's okay, yeah, no, that's all. Yeah, we, that's okay.
Tina's going to, recording, gather the seniors,
Okay.
give some snacks and coffee and show the budget.
And, and when she does that, could, I'll, I'll be happy to be there, maybe someone from the Board of Finance, if they have questions. Live, live people standing there, they can watch, maybe they could watch it first, and maybe we come at the end of it. If there's questions, if we could figure that out, possibly, Jen, or.
Do you know what time it is? If you can make it, make it.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a time yet, right? Okay.
No.
No. Okay. So, no, that's, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, I'm glad that happened. And appreciate that, just let me know, and we'll see if we can get myself and, or, or council, whoever wants to show up from the council or the Board of Finance would be good. Or the Board of Ed, I mean, whoever wants to show up would be if they have questions. So, that aside, we also have, and I appreciate Arosh and Christie working on this, we're, we're gonna put up eight signs, because unfortunately, we always, no matter what we do, you know, we want to get the word out for the budget referendum coming up on April 25th, that's the referendum. And we'll put some four-by-four signs at the busy intersections in town. I, I'm sure that, I know the public works will help. Once we get them printed, which should be soon, maybe a couple of weeks before the referendum, so folks know to go vote on the referendum, because that's, you know, so, someone asks who we work for, what we do. We're here for the people, the people elected us, we're here for what the community wants, and we appreciate the community input. We want community input, because that's what tells, gives us our direction. So, we want people to go vote at the referendum in November. Whenever we have a vote on something, please go and tell us what you want. And, you know, we obviously will do the best we can, and but we do always, the other most difficult part of what we do in the budget is we have to consider everyone, you know, the Board of Ed, social services, the police department, the fire department, public works, you name it. You want your, your streets plowed, we need new plow trucks, you know? You want the police to respond, we had to fix the radio system years ago. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's a very difficult task to be fair to everyone and try and take everyone's interest and, and concerns into account, which we do, I know we all do on the council, I know they do on the Board of Finance, on the Board of Ed, and every board and commission in town. You know, remember, we're all volunteers. And I said it over and over again, there's, I'm sorry, and not just because it's us up here, but there's nothing like the heart of a volunteer, because we have the best interests of the community at heart. Many of us grew up in town, or we've lived here for a long time, and it's, it's, it's very difficult, it's an expensive world out there, as we know, and but we do take everybody's interest, you know, as a concern, and try and do the best we can, a lot of sleepless nights trying to do the best we can. I'm sure we all have them, but we will, we'll get through this year, too. We, we have, and the town is doing great, and school system is outstanding, so we'll, we'll get to that. So, that's all I have, so let's move on. I know we still got the budget discussion to talk about, so we have our consent agenda. There's three items on here. Waving police fees for the Berlin Lions Club, for the wine tasting event, for four offices, the amount of $2,000, except donation to the Berlin Animal Control Donation Account for $188 for animal care and supplies valued at $44. Approve the request by Connecticut Trail Mixers for a trail running race to take place at Ragged Mountain on May 20th, 2023, with the conditions that the applicant works with town staff regarding logistical and safety measures with the Conservation Commission and after the event. So, those are our three consent agenda items of the folks up here, and Donna and Peter have read it, we'll go ahead and take a motion if there's no questions to approve.
I move, we accept the consent agenda provided.
Take your second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved on to new business. Before new business, should we make that motion now, Kate, to add, if you wanted to make an addition? Yes, could we, could we just make a motion to add the appointment of one individual to the alternate spot? I'm planning a zoning.
Make a motion to add an appointment. One individual can be planning a zoning.
Right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, and we have the gentleman, we've had him in our package before, so when we get to that, we can just review it, and that would be after, at the, before the Town Manager's report. All right, if there's no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved. Okay, on to new business, new business.
So, before we get to the budget, item number one. If you recall, we had a public hearing last time of the Public Golf Course Commission, and we wanted to have some affiliations filled out in the ordinance. We had some specific numbers attached to it. There was a comment made by the Chair of the Golf Commission to keep it more broad, but to include all of the groups. So, you have a red line version, it's very simple, and it says, "Membership shall consist of at least one member from the men's club, the seniors' club, the ladies' club, the lady niners' club, and a non-golfer." As long as they have one from each of these groups, they could have the eight in the golf commission.
Okay, yeah, it's.
Are we still gonna make change to the application form? That will allow them to choose which they are, so we'll still see that, okay.
Yes, so this goes into effect 30 days, if you have it. Goes into effect 30 days after publication. At that point, we'll change the application. Application will only be changed for the.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it'd be appropriate to ask council members to be part of the golf, the minor golf, senior club, or the men's club. So, we can have that only for the Golf Commission, for the other groups.
Okay, yeah, no, we heard from them, and this is what they requested, and I think we all agree to. It made sense, right? So, with that in mind, there's no comments, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to modify and accept the text to Chapter 2, Article 2, Art J, Section 2-192, Public Golf Course Commission of Berlin Codebook.
Give a second on that?
Second.
Right, is there any other comments or questions on this? I know we discussed it at the last meeting with the Golf Commission as well. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Is there opposite? No, okay, one, one against. Peter?
Yeah.
Against?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, motion still carries.
All right.
Okay, the budget.
And the number two is the fiscal year 2024 general budget. So, just a quick recap, March 1st, 2023, Town Manager and the Board of Ed presented the budget for the Board of Finance, a lot of workshops, and then later, there was a public hearing, not public hearing, the annual budget presentation that was done on March 28th. So, you have in front of you. So you have in front of you a motion to. Send the budget to the annual referendum, but I thought it'll be helpful. Before we get into the discussion. If Kevin can provide, he's ready to provide an overview of the, the budget itself. More specifically, we know, like just hearing to the public a little while ago, there's this. Disconnect somehow, you know, there's a preference to the town, the town, the town. Board of Ed is also part of the town. So as all of you know, we have a triple A bond rating. You have one balance sheet. And financial statement, everything flows through that. And I think it's important for folks to understand. You know, when you talk about surplus, fund balance, you know, annual spending, borrowing. You know what all those things, you know, what kind of, and the pressures they have, the effect on the overall health of the. Town's balance sheet. So everything comes together for the town. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin to sort of give you a high level, big bits of idea and also to speak to the surplus in the last couple of years.
That'd be great.
Years. We have had surpluses and I think I mentioned this before, it's a good thing to have surpluses.
Yes.
Because it shows that the managers actually plan well and you know. Really spend only what they need. And then when we have surpluses, we put it towards, you know, good needs, think that we can fund at the beginning. And in some environments in the corporate world, you have a surplus, you know, the. Dance director and others get bonuses. So it's not a bad thing to have a.
All of our bonuses.
Yeah, I know.
For all the surpluses we've had.
Maybe we can.
All of Roche's.
Can think about that.
A Roche is, spread it out to the council.
So let's celebrate the surpluses. It's a good thing. It's not a bad thing to have a surplus because I, I think I mentioned this before. I know some common entities including public institutions that. Their budget is based on what they spent last year. They go and just do unnecessary spending. We don't do that here. The town or the board of it. So it's a good thing to have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin and then feel free to ask any questions you have. Coming one of us. So there Kevin, over to you.
Okay, thanks Roche.
Hi Kevin.
Hi. At your desk is, is a presentation. I know there's some of you who are not there tonight, so I thought I would. Share my screen and. Kind of walk through hopefully pretty quickly. If everyone can see presentation. Just want to touch on a couple of points. There's a lot, we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions. Since March 1st, it doesn't feel like a month feels longer, but. Since that time, we've gone through a few things and there's been a lot of discussion about. Using surplus, using fund balance for a variety of things. So I want, I want to make sure before you vote, I grounded a couple of things. Out middle of the last decade, the state legislature had been wrestling with ways to try to control or mitigate the increases in mill rates across the state. One of the things that they implemented was a municipal spending cap. Basically said budgets of a town cannot go up by more than two and a half percent or the rate of inflation each year. They did eliminate some items. So they were allowing certain items and I've listed. The major ones here, debt service change, special education, capital, unfunded pension contributions and non recurring grants. There's a couple of others, arbitration awards and others, but they don't really apply because we haven't been in arbitration. So as you kind of think about that. The state has municipal revenue sharing grants. They funded it for one year, then it went away for a few years. It came back this year unexpectedly, and that's the money you appropriated earlier in the year to help with. Scanning downstairs. The governor's budget proposal is to move a different grant, the municipal stabilization grant, which was introduced in the wake of 2017 and the whole budget. Issues that have led to the enhanced rainy day funds and other things we have. He's proposing to move the stabilization grant, which is about $259,000 for Berlin. To the municipal revenue sharing grant. So on the surface, it's just a location change in the budget. However. It now falls under the municipal spending cap. Right now, if you took our current budget. Year over year increase, adjusting for changes in debt service, special ed, capital, unfunded pensions and non recurring grants. We are at. Two and a half percent. It wasn't, the budget wasn't built to get to that number, but that's where we are. To the extent you increase spending outside of these categories, you then put at risk. A quarter million dollar grant that is assumed in the budget. Also, to the extent you reduce items that are in here, removing, reducing capital. You don't have the ability to reduce special ed expenditures. Just because they're embedded within the board of ed budget and. You have a single number for them. You know, if you were to reduce debt service or pension contributions, as those amounts are reduced. You run the risk of increasing the number. So it's two and a half percent. Or the rate of inflation. Last year, that number was 6.83%. So a substantial inflation. We still have inflation. However, OPM hasn't provided us what that number is this year. So I just, I want to make sure I ground that there are a number of sort of interconnected pieces as you think through the budget. And this is one that could have an unintended consequence if you increase or decrease depending on the areas. The other thing I, I want to mention. I would be remiss if I didn't recommend to you not to use more fund balance than is already assumed in the budget. Every year we have $300,000 put into the budget for contingency. It allows for. Unexpected storms or just unexpected expenditures. That we have an opportunity to transfer money rather than a non budgeted appropriation. And every year, the last three years anyway, we've appropriated fund balance to pay for that. So rather than asking taxpayers to pay incremental taxes for what might happen. You're appropriating savings. Additionally, the board of finance appropriated the full amount, 743,000 for the actuarial determined contribution. For our closed defined benefit plan. We are nearing the end. But with the two payouts that we have with the recent retirees. That has put a significant drain on the resources that are available in the plan. And so this is an opportunity to replenish some of that money. To help with paying out the three active members as well as the 15 retirees and beneficiaries. I, I want to caution you on a couple of things in the FY24 budget. That would cause you to hopefully pause it and maybe not use more of the fund balance. First, there's $590,000 in this budget for the motor vehicle cap. That is the $32.46 cap on the motor vehicles. It's done one year in a rear. So it's off of last year's mill rate. So Berlin is, is expected to receive, based on the governor's budget, $590,000. However, every single mill rate, no matter how we've looked at the budget through this whole process. The mill rate has been below 3246. So come next year. That $590,000 should not be, you should not expect that to repeat itself. Second, the board of finance approved for additional headcount, two from. Current year that was appropriated mid-year as well as two additional. So moving the police force from 42 to 46. But also assumed that four of those positions, based on history and based on what's been happening recently, that four of them will be unfilled. So I've identified it as potentially new expenditures year over year. To the extent that the police are able to fill those positions. That would be funded in fiscal year 24. Through fund balance. You, you establish the mill rate, you're not going to go back and get more money. So you want to make sure you have that money committed. It's not appropriated. It may not be spent. But you do have to think of it as really committed and off to the side in the event that happens. And then second, the board of finance elected to. Defer the bonding payments for one year. So if you think about a 10 year bond, if we were to bond in June of 2023, we would start paying principal payments. In December of 2023. They elected to say, let's start December of 2024, not unprecedented, nothing wrong with it. But what it means is if we, if the town moves forward to those projects and if we bond. That you can expect next year's budget is going to have that increase built in. So between the revenue loss. That built in increase, if you want to move forward to those projects and bond. And if the goal of, of fully staffing 46 police officers have met. That's a one, almost $1.8 million hole or hurdle, if you will, to start fiscal year 25. So to the extent that you have some savings there to maybe help with that. It would be, my recommendation is that would be a wise move to leave that in there. Also, I, I want to remind you, I, you know, there's some things that the general fund is covering that are already actively in place. Even with the $743,000 of the closed DB plan. The unfunded pension liability from the most recent actuary report still remains at 473,000. So if the three remaining police officers were to retire, you'd have to reach into savings and take almost half a million dollars out to have the cash to pay them. They are all eligible to retire at any time. Second. You've approved or will approve tonight. You have an important one on the, the agenda. Projects with fairly low contingency rates. Typically, when we do projects of this size, you're looking at 10 to 20% contingencies. Skaggle Field Fire Alarm upgrades for both Willard and Griswold. So we can finish off the school upgrades. Steel Boulevard remediation. We still own that property and we still own that responsibility. Percival Field renovations, each of which has a very low. Contingency on the project, which means the contingency falls to the general fund. There's been discussion about mitigating bonding or. Or ideally not bonding at all for either the police station or the Griswold Hubbard HVAC upgrades.
Where did it go?
And then finally, during the board of finance discussions, there was talk about trying to use some of the surplus, if it materializes. To help with the playgrounds. There was a number of parents who spoke about. Their desire to see some of the playgrounds at the schools and off, off of the school sites upgraded, the equipment upgraded, the equipment improved. We have the annual request for police cars that were pushed to the surplus line in the budget. So just, I, I want to make sure as you think about whether to use fund balance and whether to do it. There are a number of elements that are already weighing on. Fund balance. So I would caution against trying to put more on that. And then finally, the last thing I will share is a bit of an eye chart. So I apologize, but I think it's a requirement in finance. Looking back over fiscal year 2021 and 22. For the overall surpluses for the town of, of Berlin. 20 and 21, I will repeat what you've heard many times before. Those are two pretty significant anomaly years because of COVID. You had buildings shut down. There was substantial savings from electricity. We had less activity happening, which resulted in fuel savings, natural gas savings. Additionally, we had supply shortages, which meant many of the operating supplies just could not be purchased. And we had contractual money returned back because in many instances, we just couldn't find contractors to do work that was intended. So a, as you kind of go through. The first column under each year is the gross surplus. So that is before any of the money had been used. The second column for each year is what was the surplus used for? How much money? And then some notes around what it was used for. You could see that a number of these items, they're used for one time items, capital projects, capital purchases. It's important, if you were to use surplus money, to really think of it as. A one time item. I realize that we work towards surpluses every year and by law, we have to stay within the budget. So. You're going to, you should assume that there will be something left over because we're just not permitted by law to over expend our appropriation. But at the same time. You don't want to embed that into your operating because it may not repeat and it certainly may not repeat at the level every single year. So I, I mean, I can walk through all of the numbers. It's, I said, it's a bit of an eye chart, but the major drivers, as I said, are really. Contractual services, operating materials, electricity and then vacant positions. We, the most significant area with vacant positions again this year, unfortunately, has been the police department. There are several attempts made to try to address that. And I would also point out that every year we also evaluate as the budget moves forward to try to adjust for what we're seeing year over year. Whether that's adding 1.5 million dollars of interest into the FY24 budget to reflect rapidly increasing interest rates. Whether it is not funding for positions, assuming a vacancy in the police department. And a number of other areas that are already embedded into this budget that you're looking at. With that. Threw a lot at you and I'll stop right there and see if you have any questions.
So appreciate that overview. A question for you. What's the fund balance now in dollars? How much is it in there?
It is, let me just pull that up. 10.9 million dollars.
10.9?
Yes. Keep in mind, we, we finished the audit with 13 million.
Right.
Throughout this fiscal year, the council and board of finance appropriated 2.1 million. You, you appropriated money for the Atkins Street purchase, police station project, Percival Field work and the 50% deposit on a fire truck. So that's really where it stands now. Proposed in the budget is another 743,000 of that to be used for the closed pension.
And what's the, I know they took out a bunch of capital. What's the, what's left in the capital budget? Is it like 1.1 million left?
1,170,000. And I, I would say that the, the board of finance spent a fair amount of time on each of those items. We, we tiered. So there's a cross functional team that gets together and looks at the capital and we tiered those to be the highest priority. For example, the number one priority on the list. Was bringing in a contractor to look because we are getting moisture into the old part of Berlin High School coming in through. The, the patio area, the courtyard area there. So addressing that before it becomes a serious moisture problem. We're getting. The white powder on the floor. It's, that was the number one priority. The second priority is we have three highway trucks where the beds really need to be replaced. Mr. Simons did a great job of. Finding a solution where he could actually replace the three beds for the cost of what it would take to replace one truck. So you're really keeping three trucks on the road for a decade or more. There's been a lot of creative thought. I would caution against. You know, the, the capital items that were left were the highest of high priorities from that list. It started with over $6 million from departments, from board of ed throughout all of the town. It was whittled down to a 2.7 million dollar request. And then, you know, down to 1,170,000.
Is the 10, 10.9 million, that's after they took out the 750 or is that, is that what's left in there now?
That's what's in there now. If the 743 were removed, you'd be down to 10, 10, 186, 10.2.
But did they took, they already put, proposed to take that out in the budget or, or, or no?
They did. They proposed to appropriate the full amount of the closed pension. Yes, that's in the budget proposal. That's a, it's an appropriation of fund balance.
Will actually reduce until we take it out.
Right. Next year. So it may not reduce if we have a four point something million dollar surplus and we. And use that for.
It, it would reduce it. It's just the $4 million of operating activity between receipts and expenditures would help offset that and, and rebuild the fund balance.
How close? Are we sure about that $4 million surplus? Is it higher? Can it be higher than that? Do we know? Yeah, I know. It's only April, but. April, May, June, you know, three months to go. We have any projections, but that's the best projection we have now.
That's the best we have right now. I mean, a significant amount of that money, about 1.7 million. Is interest. The town has been able to take advantage of the rapidly rising interest rates.
Yeah.
You know, and then the second most significant element would be vacancies in the police department. You know, and then the second most significant element would be vacancies in the police department.
I'm sorry, the vacancies in the police department, I think we all know, unfortunately, it's not a good thing. But I I I think the chief knows this, discussed it with him several times, that. What are they down to now? Thirty five, thirty six?
We might have eight openings.
Eight openings, yeah, and I think we know that in the next year, the way recruitment for law enforcement is going, it's not going in a good direction. And we don't have that many spots in a police academy, even if today we could hire eight people, I don't believe we would have an academy spot to. To probably train more than two of them at a time, possibly, if, you know, if we even find. Two or three or four, we're not finding eight, that that's unfortunately, every police department's in that boat, but.
And that's why the Board of Finance elected to approve, but not fund four of the positions. That way, we don't get into the issue last year of is the position approved? Obviously, you can, you can change that, the council can decide, they don't even want to approve the positions, but. The intent was to empower the chief and the police commission to move forward and fill if possible. But also not, ideally not overtax residents for a situation where there was a high probability. That said, you do want to leave, like I said, a a commitment of knowing that your fund balance is there as a backup. You don't want to spend the same dollar multiple times.
Yes. Another question, just slipped my mind. What's our debt payment now?
Overall. It's about eight, I believe it's about eight point nine million in the budget.
What, and what was it seven years ago? Seems awfully high, and I'm putting you on the spot, but we had a hundred, what, twenty million dollars in debt or so, and now we're down to what, seventy million dollars in debt? Yeah, this is what I dream about all night. This is what I dream about all night.
It's, it's high fifties right now. It's substantially down from where it was.
Right, correct. So it seems like our debt payment didn't go down that much. Our debt payment a couple of years ago was, I thought, at. Ten million, right, with with a, with a much higher balance of. I mean, we're at a hundred and what, fifteen million, and now we're at, you think we're around what, fifteen million now in 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 debt? And our debt payment's still eight point nine, that seems awfully high to me.
When we first started in twenty seventeen, really focusing on this, debt service was worth about thirteen percent of the budget. Today, it's, you know, eight to nine percent. But remember that general obligation bonds are are serial bonds, so you're you're paying basically the same principal every year for the life of the bond. Prior to twenty seventeen, the town was issuing predominantly twenty-year bonds. So you're basically paying the same principal amount. Your interest will decline, but your principal amount remain the same for twenty years. So if you think about the, you know, I'll call them the high school bonds, there were a number of other elements within the bonds, but for a four-year period. The town was borrowing between six and thirteen million dollars each year for several items. So those bonds are going to have the same principal payments until the mid twenty thirties. We're actually scheduled to start paying off bonds that are on the books today in twenty twenty six, fully paying them off. We will fully retire all of the bonds issued from twenty seventeen and on. Before the first bond that was issued for the high school project is retired. Because we've reduced the twenty-year to borrowing for ten years. By doing that, you've saved substantial interest and you're able to pay off things much faster. You know, I I I, when we were doing the community senior center, I did a presentation for them and. One of the things I said, I I described the high school bonds, but many, most towns do it. If you have a twenty-year bond, I think of them as a generation bond. You had a kid that you put into first grade, when that bond was first issued. You're, you're going to be paying for that bond even still when that kid's at high school graduation. I mean, it's an entire generation will pay. You'll go through a whole generation when you do a twenty-year bond, so we've tried to reduce that term, which has substantially helped. The bond rating. One of the drivers of a triple A bond rating is the percentage of your bonding that's due within the next ten years. And that number, if it's seventy percent or higher, puts you at the highest score. There's, there's various elements, but that's one of the things the standard impores and Moody's looks at is how much of your debt is due in the next ten years and how much is longer? So you're not, your debt load is coming down, but you're not necessarily seeing it. Every single year in your debt service payments, but you will start within a couple of fiscal years seeing a more noticeable drop off.
In in the next, next twenty-six fiscal year, right? That was kind of the cliff we have talked about that it goes down.
That's the last year. After that, you start to see.
What, what, what kind of reduction in that debt, debt payment? Just roughly, I know, you know, I know, you don't have.
Yeah, fiscal twenty-seven, it's about a million dollars a year just for the bonds that will come off the books that year. So you're going to start to see, and then I believe there's a one-year pause, and then you start to see that again for a couple of more years. So you're, you're going to start to really see chunks come off. You're just, you're at that. When we first started this in twenty seventeen, one of the conversations we had is the first year or two is tough because you need the momentum. And the last couple of years are the toughest because the town has been at this now for a few years, really trying to take down the debt level. It's hard after five, six, seven years of hearing the same mantra and doing the same thing.
Exhausting.
Yeah, you're almost there, but I I feel like.
Almost there, we can't quite reach out and grab it yet, huh?
Don't turn the ball over, you'll win a title.
For the benefit of the audience, just, so this started as Kevin just explained, which is a great explanation. I don't know, when I took the council, when we got elected, we were seriously in debt, way, way over our heads in debt. And and I guess the most curious thing to me was, part of it was the high school, which I think was around fifty million, right, maybe? Did we borrow fifty million for the high school?
Forty-seven, but yep, you're right.
Yeah, which we needed, which was great, and it's wonderful. But then there was another fifty, sixty million, seventy million. I still can't figure out where that money went. I I think they started bonding for operational funds, maybe, because so many things were broken in the town. Capital projects, I mean, serious capital, like the police radio system, one of my favorites. Is that it was so old, thirty years old, the Motorola system that we had, that there were nights that if you called nine one one. You would get Berlin dispatcher in our town hall and in parts of the town on various nights. The dispatcher couldn't raise the police unit in the area to come help you by radio. Thank God for cell phones, they did work. But that's not how you run law enforcement or police department, and that was broken. We fixed that to the tune of a million bucks. The fire radio system was in the same situation, another million dollars. And we needed to buy, we need to replace a lot of our fire apparatus, which was from the seventies. And I think we are replacing nine, uh, nine trucks with seven, is that the number? I think, what are we, on number four now, five? Fire trucks?
We've done, we've done four. Right now, we're caught up, we're going to pause for a couple of years.
That's right, yeah, but we were going to do seven, but we're going to get rid of nine and replace it with seven, I think that's what we talked about. Because the fire departments would share their apparatus, so. These are serious public safety issues, you know, my favorite story, I've said it a million times, I love it, that the fire truck on the way back from a fire caught on fire, electrical fire. That's how old the equipment was, for those of you that haven't heard these things. And, you know, really bad, really bad financial shape, and 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 our bond rating was not good, and the pension fund, which. Somehow, back in history, twenty years ago, maybe fifteen years ago, some. Somebody came up with lump sum payments when our officers retired, when they switched from a. Define benefit plan, the pension plan basically, to a 401K plan. The new officers were in the 401K, the existing folks in the pension plan could either choose their annuity payment every year, which was fairly easy to make. Or they can choose a lump sum. And at that point, I forget how many people were in the police department and the town. Folks are walking away, and good for them, I don't, you know, I don't begrudge them their financial success, but. I've never heard of a public pension plan where they could walk away with one point two million, one point five million, one point eight million in lump sum. From a pension fund that didn't exist, there was nothing in the pension fund, nothing was put in it with our predecessors on the council. For eight or nine years, maybe a hundred grand a year they put in, it didn't even, you know, catch up, so. Basically, what I saw, the town was facing a financial disaster, really, and those of us on the council at the time, I think felt the same way. So we had to cut the bonding, bridges weren't fixed, I I just, it was a host of things that I couldn't believe, not, did not get done. Yeah, we had all this debt, even the budget to the Board of Ed was not up to par. That's why the first couple of years in office, it was a low, I think it was in the one point two, one point five percent range. To the Board of Ed for their incre- increase in their budget because we had no money. And the debt payment you see is still eight point nine million dollars. If we had half of that money today, that'd be great, fund the Board of Ed, we could fund. Pretty much everything, we could do so much with that. And we're working to get that payment down, and we're working to get the, you see the bond, you know, the bond amounts are down too. The high school, the is the high school, that had to be done, but the rest of it, I could still never figure out where all that money went. Because stuff was not fixed, all kind of things were not fixed in the town. And now we've also, the good thing this year is our revenue is up, we have really put into place for the last few years. Economic development town, which will raise our, you know, revenue, I think our revenues are up, what, two point something million this year? The revenues are up, two point two million in extra revenues from some of the projects we've done and, you know. Chris Edge and and everybody in the town hall, and everybody has been doing a great job. But it's still not enough this year because of that wonderful revaluation year. That is killing us, it really is, it's mandated by the state, it's even mandated how we do it. So we don't have a lot of say in it, and it is what it is, and the, the bright side to that is our home values went up. You know, with with COVID and pandemic, everybody was looking for senior family homes and to isolate, and Berlin is a great town. The school system is wonderful, and so they wanted to come to Berlin, which was great, but because the revale hit. On this year, last year, every town is facing this. I mean, our average single-family home values are up twenty percent. On the downside of that, the commercial appraisals are down, are are only up like ten or thirteen percent. So the homeowners are really kind of taking it on the chin with this revale, and there's very, it's almost impossible to. To lower that increase, whi- which is why, though, we're, the Board of Finance. Did take the budget down as much as possible, I think we're at a what, zero point eight six mil rate increase now? The mil rate went from three thirty-four point something down to what is it, point eighty-six?
Yes.
Zero point eight six, right? Yeah. So, and that's still, I'm sorry, in my opinion, then you guys could all speak, not good enough. Because that's still a tax increase, even though we lowered the mil rate with the increase in the. Uh, in the revaluations that we're all being affected by, and the houses that are affected the most, it's kind of weird with the figures. If you look at the list, that's on the town website, you can go to your address and see what you're, right now with this proposed budget, I think, right, what, what your taxes will go up. It's the houses in what I think we consider middle class and and, you know, normal homes today, they're not mansions, they're not, you know. But it depends, they're, they're kind of all over the board. Some are up a couple hundred bucks, some are up twelve hundred dollars, in the same price ranges. In different neighborhoods. Some are up more, some are up fifteen hundred dollars. So it's, it's hard to really focus on what, what, how, how it all came to be. But we have folks that are seniors on fixed incomes that are looking at a thousand dollar increase and a not, you know, real. You know, multimillion dollar mansion, eight hundred dollar increase on your taxes. Right now, as it stands with this budget, I I don't think that's acceptable, and all the towns are facing that, so I I don't know. So it's a different, difficult, difficult year with that revale, and there's nothing really we can do about it, but kind of take the hit. But how much of a hit can our folks take? And that's everybody, you know, like we talked about earlier, we 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 have to focus on the whole town. There are folks, you know, will we take the hit in social services? Do we cut more out of the social service budget? Not a good place. Public works, we don't need the streets plowed, police department, who needs police protection? You know, there's just so many things that is, it's all important. Board of Ed, of course. We have a phenomenal school system, I I I actually got to say this, I resent, somebody sent me a screenshot of something on social media, which is why I don't read it much. About how the mayor disparages the Berlin Board of Ed and the school system. Oh my God, never, never, never have I said that, just, I I got to say that in public. I went to the Berlin schools, my wife went to the Berlin schools, my son went to Berlin schools a few years ago, I'm sorry, you know. It's a great school system, and we've showed that with the increase in funding over the last three years when we can afford it. We've been at three percent, we've moved our per pupil spending up to the highest in the area, over twenty thousand per pupil. We were much lower than that three years ago. We are up in the top of our DUR group. And higher than Rocky Hill, Blastonberry, I think the only ones that's a few hundred dollars higher than us, per pupil spending is Newington. And quite frankly, the results of their tests don't look too good, we look much better. So we're all very proud of our school system, and we want to keep it that way. And we have, we funded it in their own, you know, literature and their budget presentation, they've been very happy with our funding the last three years. So, and last year was two and a half percent, we went up to three because we understand, you know, they've got issues too. But that doesn't solve our problem with the people with the, with the property tax. I mean, it's, 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 could be devastating to folk, so. I don't think it's low enough yet myself, I'm not sure how to lower it at this point. I mean, my first impression would be taking a million dollars out of fund balance and the million dollars out of the capital. Reduce it to two million, which would do, what, what would they do to the mil rate? Brian, can you do a quick calculation? The mil rate would go down to what? Twenty-nine point four, if we took two million more out of the budget?
Mayor, I don't think the council's permitted to add.
Do that?
Balance appropriation.
Okay, so that will mean to me, we will be going back to the Board of Finance, but that's my opinion. Would, I would reject this budget, I want to go back to the Board of Finance, it's not good enough. They worked hard, they, God bless them, they did a great job, it's not good enough. I wouldn't touch three percent of the Board of Ed, I would leave that, we can't lower that anyway, not that I would want to lower it. I would, I would send that, you know, ultimately, when we're done with the Board of Finance, the, the people need to vote on it, it needs to go to the folks, and they need to tell us. What they want to do. But what I would do is, I wish Julie was still here, I wanted to tell her tonight that. In some discussions with, you know, her folks and and the Board of Ed and different folks, they've got some contingencies in their, in their budget that they could use. Which would alleviate some of the cuts below that red line on their budget that they proposed the other night, that's proposed by the Board of Finance. Which would restore some of those positions. The contingencies are there for emergencies and different categories, and they should be there. But as we have always told the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance told them that this year, I've always told them that in the last eight years. If you use those contingency funds that you don't need right now, and they may total two hundred fifty thousand, it could be more than that, excuse me. You come to the council, you come to the Board of Finance, if you need money, we will give you that money, depending upon obviously what it is and you explain it to us, so. That would be a suggestion right now, you know, just they can look at their own budget. I mean, you got to realize, when we give the Board of Finance, the Board of Ed a budget, we give them a lump sum, we can't tell them what to do with the money, we can't. You know, that it's, it's their lump sum of money, fifty point whatever, million dollars is up to, up to them to spend. But if there are some contingencies that they're holding, in case of emergencies in certain categories, that's great, that, that's a good thing they're doing. But I would propose to use all of that and make sure some of those cuts, especially below that red line, would be restored. With some of that money, it's still a little short to restore all of the red line, below the red line, but, you know. It rains to me seeing it's still a proposed budget. So, but I, it's not good enough, if we can't do that, then we got to go back to the Board of Finance and figure out a way to do it. Because that mil rate's got to come down to almost no tax increase, because we're still going to have our tax increase with the revale. We can never get, we can't, I mean, we're going to lower that tax increase a little bit if we lower the budget more. But we can never get down to a zero tax increase like we've had for the last three years, basically. So, but I think it's still too high for people, it's just too much to to absorb in one year. So, anyway, that's my ranting and raving, I'm sorry, very passionate about it, but what, what say you all?
Yeah, can I just make it, I I want to first thank everybody that's been working so hard. Excuse me, on this budget during the past four weeks, Kevin, Board of Finance, Mayor. Counsel Roach, I will add that I think we should send it back. I'm one of those fortunate homeowners that saw a twelve hundred plus dollar increase this year. In a three hundred year old farmhouse, so just to let you know, I'm one of those. Also, I want to just point out that we, we're trying to get some funding from the state for the PD. Hoping that we'll be able to have some money towards that, whether it's part, total. I I don't know yet, and hoping to have an answer over the next couple. some money towards that, whether it's part, total, I, I don't know yet and hoping to have an answer over the next couple of months. You know, at this point in time, one really doesn't know what the governor's budget is going to be, what the education budget is going to be, what additional monies may be thrown out from the education department. I know that the bills are just going to start hitting the floor. We're in session tomorrow for the day. And it will get fast and furious over the next couple of weeks, two months to be exact. And you just don't know what will come our ways. And I know there's extra, you know, ARPA money that's sitting there and one never knows where and if some of it will come our way. So I'm hopeful that we'll be fortunate enough to get something, at least for the PD and perhaps some other things down the road. But I think with the recession looming and clearly we are in a recession, whether they want to use that term or not. The price of goods and services is through the roof, whether you open up your electric bill, your gas bill or go to the grocery store, you're looking at 25 and 30% and sometimes more. So I think that if there's any way for us to help all the people in Berlin, you know, swallow this a little bit easier. It's unfortunate that the timing of events between reevaluation and the recession that we are most definitely in happened at the same time. I, I agree with you, you know, Mayor Mark, and I hope the council will as well. Thank you.
And Donna, thanks. I appreciate you being there at the state level too. You know, every town is different in what they get and we know Donna's their fighting force and it's great. She's, you know, able to, to do that. And whatever we can get from the state would be great. Obviously we know that. And again, it's still all taxpayer money.
Yep.
If, if the state
If they're doling it out, we might
How some fun money, please send it, send it to Berlin. We can use it.
Absolutely.
So I mean, that's kind of, so thank you folks, whoever, next. Yes, sir.
I agree, we should send this back. It's a struggle for all the taxpayers. I'm sorry this becomes an adversarial position. People think you're against the schools if you don't want to support a large increase. One misconception I hear from people is you're cutting the school budget. It's against state law. Cut the school budget from the previous year. You can only lower the increase of the budget for the next year. There's no cutting the budget. And every year we have less students in our, in our schools. And I get it. If you follow the tenants of Karl Marx, take the student away from the parent and that's what our society is doing. And our school systems are controlled by the Hartford mandate. I understand there's huge pressures put on for special edge, special programs without wanting to support it. I know it's going to cost us money, more money every year with the way our society is going. And someone asked, why are you up here? I'd like to think we're up here to make a town for everyone. The older folks have to live here, like Mark pointed out, a lot of them on fixed income. We need safe roads. We need police cars. Got to have fire engines. I don't think anybody would want to cut any of those. God forbid a school caught on fire. We didn't have the right equipment to help the students get out of it. I mean, there's so many issues and no one's going to be happy. Maybe that's the best result. When everybody's a little bit unhappy, maybe that's where we should land. But I'm really sorry people see it as an adversarial position. I get how important education is. My wife and I raised four sons. They all have forced graduate degrees. I see how that good education made their lives better. And I support it 100%. Just we have to get the most efficient mechanism possible delivered at education to the students.
Well,
Yes.
I, I support that. I'm, I'm not voting for the budget also, but on the grounds that I think that we should go with the Board of Ed's recommendation with regard to funding for the Board of Ed for the schools. And that's why I would be rejecting the budget and sending it back. On the grounds of the Board of Ed and I support the Board of Ed's recommendation. And I think that Board of Finance needs to take another look.
I also think we should send it back. I think a joint meeting would be very beneficial before we go to.
Sandy? Yeah, again, I know, you know, Kevin, Board of Finance, Roach, you know, I sat in on some of the, the meetings, the budgets and it's tough decisions.
Oh, it's horrible.
You know, people are passionate about different projects, you know, Board of Education, Parks and Rec. You know, our seniors, they're all important. And, you know, it, it comes down to how do you, how do you fund everything and not hurt anyone? And it's just not possible. So, you know, in different budgets that I've done for businesses or practices, et cetera, it's again, trying to find out what are the most important needs currently? What can we get done? What does it look like we're going to be having next year? You know, it'd be great if we can, you know, cut some out of capital and, and, you know, transfer from fund. I understand we, we can't, but maybe Board of Finance can. But we also have to keep in mind, okay, that helps this year, but what does that do the following year? You know, we don't want to kick the can where we get into issues where we can't, can't do what's necessary. But it just comes down to, again, rolling up sleeves. Is there something else we can do? Is there somewhere else we can look? I know Board of Finance has looked kind of everywhere.
Their little hearts out, they have.
It is. And it's, and again, it's, it's not easy. Because again, you cut somewhere, you know, you don't want to give money to the playgrounds when you're against the kids. You know, you, you don't want to give to the Board of Finance. You're against the kids. You don't want to do the police department. There's an issue there. Again, it's not an easy position for all us to be in or Board of Finance, you know, you know, our terrific salaries. Or, but, but again, I think we're all here for, it, it comes down to try and help the town, to try and do what's best for the town. I appreciate those that come out, but there's some that can't come out, whether it's they work at night or they can't get here or they're not, you know, they don't like to speak in public. So again, it's trying to take all that in and I would agree at this point to send it back to Board of Finance and have a joint meeting and see, you know, maybe something more comes out of it. Maybe it doesn't, but I think it's worth another look.
Good shot. And Mr. Peter?
Oh.
Hey. There you are. What's up, Peter?
I'm in, I'm in Never Neverland here. And
Well, yeah, you're at Disney. Is that what you're saying?
It feels like you're watching this council, but I, I'm out of state and I apologize, but you know, and I'm, and I'm sure you're sick of hearing me say this, but while education is expensive, ignorance is unaffordable. And, uh, you know, we're all agreeing to send this back, so why beat a dead horse? Let's just send it back and see what the finance committee can do, Board of Finance can do. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
If I can speak to the Board of Education, I have been an educator for over 30 years. I have a doctorate in education. And I also worked for the State Department of Education for, for the state of Connecticut. And I think, you know, we really want to think about if, not going to use the word cut, but if we don't fully fund the Board of Education to the extent that we can, and we're really only looking at a difference of, you know, it's really pennies per day per taxpayer if we were to go with Board of Ed recommendation over the 3%. So when you look at that, it's not as painful in that regard. What we don't want to do is start constricting on the Board of Ed and then have to rebuild it again. Just like you were talking about all of the ways in which the town had to rebuild itself, you know, from mismanagement.
As well as the Board of Ed. We rebuilt it all.
Exactly. You know, which is, you know, so right now we're in a really good place and yet we're at in a fortunate period in time because all the housing prices went up and that's a good thing. And yet that's gonna, that's gonna also mean, you know, more taxes out of our pocket than we were expecting to have. On the other hand, if we are, are, you know, our most cherished resource in a small town like ours is the school system. You know, it really is. It's what, it's what we have. It's what we're, you know, we all are raising children here or have raised children here or will raise children here someday. And it is, you know, it's, it's tied to the property values and all of those things are inextricably linked. I could go into detail, like I had shared at our last meeting. I did purchasing for the State Department of Education and I never had a year where the vendors came and said, hey, listen, we're going to charge you less this year than we charged you last year. Always the vendors charged more every single year. So there's just those natural costs that go into anything that, you know, that comes along with running an institution like education. And then, I mean, you know, we've all seen the potential of what could happen. But when you think about one assistant principal at the middle school and removing the lead teacher, that is going to have a serious impact on what is happening in that school. I cannot, that's one of the course of action that we take. So you have the principal and an assistant principal running a middle school. I'm telling you, that is extremely challenging. You basically have two adults at the helm and a school with, you know, well over 500 students and, and counting, you know. Without that extra lead teacher, if that's one of the courses of action they take, you know, you're talking about safety issues in a middle school, you know, the kids are, I know they're, they're, they, they need that support from, from the folks that can run the building while the teachers are teaching in the classroom. So just removing something like that, it, it just, you know, the, the waterfall effect of that is, is just not going to be good. I know it's potentially dangerous, honestly. And now I've been in schools for many years. I was administrator. Now, not a good thing. It's not, it would be, it is normal for a school of that size to have two assistant principals. Right now we have one assistant principal and a lead teacher. And now we're talking about getting rid of the lead teacher. I, I would really, I'd be, I'd be concerned about my own children who are in elementary school right now going, going to McGee. Those conditions, honestly. I would be really thinking about alternatives. That would make me nervous.
No, I, it's all part of the puzzle here. I mean, the only thing I could say about the Board of Ed funding is we've done very well at it. It was not in a good shape seven years ago and we've done well, so much so that our, I, I, you know, and, and this is not my measure. This is a measure that was in every Board of Ed presentation for the last seven years I've been here. And they always hit us on the per people spending. That's what we heard day in and day out. We heard that and, and we, we took it to heart and you see where we stand now. We are above everybody. Newington, Glastonbury, Farmington, Rocky Hill, Cromwell, Weathersfield. We're above 20,322. So we haven't, I, I, I really am offended when I hear we've ignored the Board of Ed or we haven't funded it properly in these last few years. Oh my God, that is just not the case. And that's on their, that's on their own page. Here, Berlin's adopted budgets in the past two years have compared favorably. So we've, we've, you know, we've done a great job. And I'm a little taken back, quite frankly, that the Board of Ed, which they've never done since I've been here, not that they haven't done it in the past. I can't, I don't know when they've done it beyond when I wasn't here, but you have a wonderful professional, Brian Benigni, the superintendent, been in town 30 years, right? Was a principal at McGee amongst other positions. He knows this town better than anybody as far as the education and what he needs to fund education in this town. He proposed a, you know, a budget. And, you know, for some reason the Board of Ed decided to up it pretty significantly in a year that we're facing these issues. I mean, he's, he's the professional and he knows this town very well. So I was a little taken back by the Board of Ed going that high, above his recommendation. Who knows the, the budget better than Brian? And he's outstanding. He's been an outstanding administrator for our town. So that's the only issue I kind of have with how that's laid out with the, with the Board of Ed, but that's for some more discussion with the Board of Finance, you know, we can talk about that and, and it's ultimately for the voters. That's who's going to have to probably give us what direction they want with the referendum. But before we get there.
Another way to look at it, it's possible that Brian was allowing the Board of Ed to back a request that he wasn't willing to make himself.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, knowing him well, I don't think that's how he operates, but I, I certainly can't speak to what's in his mind. But, um, so whatever. So we're all on the same page. Yes, sir.
Talks about sending it back to the Board of Finance.
For the joint meeting.
Charge in terms of what you expect them to do in terms of
Yeah, pick another 2 million out of the budget. The fund balance, if they could take it out of there and they could take the million capital out. And we'll, we'll do what we've done the last few years when the capital, there's many capital projects, certainly the important ones that they left in. As that surplus becomes available, we'll start with the most important one and, and move forward and fund them.
So you would want the mill rate to, remember the adjusted mill rate was 29.16?
Yeah, well, the adjusted mill rate right now is 30.
Starting point. The 34.31 was last year because of the revaluation.
Yeah.
If you had last year's budget, just
The mill rate now is, stands at 30.02 with their budget?
29.16 was the base budget to start with. So it's up to 30.02.
Correct.
But you want it back to 29.16? That, that was before we added a single dollar to the budget.
Yeah, I think we're there. For the folks of Berlin. I, I don't, I don't know. You're talking $1,200 tax bills and, and we're going to put more burden on these folks. I don't know how we could do that.
But I'm saying at 29.16 you're going to have.
Well, if we took the 2 million out, wouldn't it be a little bit higher than that? 29.3? 0.25, 0.3?
Below 29, I would think.
Not below 29. I don't, I don't think so.
2 million, 2.
Well, it's, it's at 0.86 now, right? Increase of the
Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but 8 million is about one mill right now, I think.
So we'd be down to 29.
If you took 2 million out, you'd be down to 29.32?
That's what I thought, 29.32, okay. And that's just about a zero mill rate increase with, with the adjustments, right? Which we've been able to do. And this year with the revale, I, I, I don't know how we could add more taxes to folks' tax bill. I'm sorry, I just don't know how people are going to afford this. With inflation, with all the other problems we're all facing, with the recession and COVID, we're all getting out of COVID. So it's a convergence of a horrible scenario, I think, for, for everybody. I mean, not just Berlin, it's the whole country, you know, it's not just us, the whole country's in a recession. So, um, I don't know. I don't know if that's the amount that's talking out loud here and why we need to go back to the Board of Finance and we all seem to be on the same page and talk about different parts of the budget and see what we could all come up with before it goes to referendum. Ultimately, you know, maybe goes to referendum this way. I don't, I don't know. I, I think it's too high though. It would increase taxes too much. Yeah, yes, Kevin, I know.
I was just going to say, Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe by charter, if you vote to reject it, you have to come together as a joint meeting. And you need nine out of the 13 of you to vote in favor of whatever budget comes out.
That is true.
You did this.
Where we're at, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
That's where we're at. I mean, if we, we can't lower this budget enough, I'm not comfortable sending it forward even to referendum myself, but then we all were on the same page, right? Reject it, send it back, do, do some more discussion.
Time.
Yeah, we'll all make the time. Believe me, that's not what we want to do, but it's, I think, we've never done it before, but I think more discussion, wherever it ends up, it ends up with the Board of Ed and the joint meeting and then it'll go to referendum from there and the voters will speak. And that's important. That's where it needs to be.
I'm sorry, may I have a question?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Jeff, what do we think, Jeff? You want to weigh, you should weigh in, Jeff. What do we got?
We can't get nine votes. Nine people to agree. Happens.
You need, you need nine. If you don't get nine, it is what it is.
It goes back to last year, so.
Yeah.
Last year's.
Yeah. This year, well, this year's.
This current year, yeah, yeah. No.
No.
It's the year, it's called 2023 budget. Zero increase.
Not what anyone wants to see, but I, I don't, I don't, I was sending it forward. I don't, I don't think it's the way to go without some discussion. They don't get the nine to send it forward or whatever we can do.
Does it still go to referendum?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to go to referendum no matter what, right, Jeff?
Yep.
However, it ends up with the joint meeting. Yeah.
So if it reverts back to this and then it goes to referendum and it gets voted down, then it just goes through the regular process from there.
Back around again. Yeah. Because listen, the Board of Ed stuff you're talking, the below the red line cuts there, yeah, I mean, that's not a ton of funding there. I mean, it's difficult this year, but below the red line from what I've gathered from the discussion with the Board of Ed is the critical stuff. Not, not that it's all critical, don't get me wrong, but those are, especially those secondary reading teacher, elementary math intervention, academic resource. That's the contingency fund that they have now though, in their budget, at least with the budget with the 3% increase, they have that money to those bottom positions in red, which means to me that's pretty important. They have the money in their fund to, to, to keep those folks. Um, they have the money in their fund to, to, to keep those folks. Um, and, you know.
I, I wanna, I wanna correct what I said.
Yes.
Okay, looking at seven dash five of the charter.
Yes.
When the council rejects the budget.
Yeah.
You then have a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Finance.
Right.
And as we said, you need nine members, seven of the, seven members of the two agencies is a quorum. However, you need nine members to vote to revise. Unless revised, the budget's considered approved by the joint board and then goes to referendum.
That's what I thought. Okay, so the budget they proposed, if we can't get nine votes, would go forward to the referendum as.
Right, what you're rejecting tonight, if it doesn't get revised.
Would be approved.
Nine members.
That's.
The referendum.
That's a much better scenario.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of what I thought it was. I, 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 I was a little nervous about that. I didn't think that was right. So it would go forward as is now to the voters, if we can't reduce it a little bit more. Okay, so, um, yes.
I mean, you know this, but I'll probably make, say this at the Board of Joint Meeting, too. We are already at a one point eight million dollar. Hole that we are digging for fiscal twenty twenty-five. You take another million, so you're probably looking at potentially two point eight three million dollars. The hole to begin with.
So philosophically, the fund balance, yeah, okay.
So unless there's, um, enough growth in the grand list to offset the entire two point eight, that's probably like a ninety-six million dollar. Growth in the grand list, right? Close to a hundred million dollars. You're starting with deficit to begin with. So next year, before you do any of that, you'll have a one mil increase.
I mean, uh, so, so almost a mil increase this year on top of the revale? This year?
Talking fiscal.
I know, next year, I, I get that, but, but when I'm, the, the following year.
We won't have a revale.
But we won't have a revale figured into, correct?
But, but.
So the one mil would be.
Mil is already baked in now.
Yeah.
Just, this is kind of like spreading out the disaster over two years like we talked about.
But I think we gotta spread it out a little bit. I don't, I don't really see a way around it, but, but, but the fund balance always, I, I mean, I get. Uh, listen, I know we run the town fiscally, we're gonna continue to be responsible with it. But this is an unusual year for a lot of reasons, like we've mentioned, and. You know, it's not desperation for the town of Berlin, we're great, in great financial shape and everything, but, but. Not, not for folks that may not be able to afford that, that tax bill in their home, and, uh. That's not good, and we have, you know, if you have money in a savings account and your car breaks down. And you gotta get to work, you, you probably take some of that money out of the savings account, not, not drain your account, but you go get your car fixed to, to get to the job. So. It, it's an emergency fund, correct? Really? It's, I mean, I know it's, it's more than that, that's so, oversimplification, I got it, but.
I'm also ti, fun, funding things on a one-time basis.
Yes.
When you include your annual operations.
Yeah.
Off the fund balance.
Yeah.
Next year, that's not there, just like the five hundred and ninety thousand from the state, they're not gonna get it.
Right.
Like, and if you kill the, kill the police officers.
Well.
Funded next year.
Yeah, I mean, that's like not funding ghosts. I mean, they're, they're not, they're, there's no, there's not eight officers gonna join Berlin PD next year. I wish there was, and if there is, you know what? I think we'll pay for that, but that's not happening.
Once you get the pension, you're gonna fill all those positions.
Maybe, maybe. We don't have the slots in the academy, though. I mean, there's a lot of things. Yeah, I know, I know, I get it.
These things, and again, if I have.
Yes.
It's like a broken record.
Yeah.
Yeah, the town is also facing inflationary pressures from supplies to materials to contracts.
No doubt.
To trash.
Agreed, yeah, we all are.
Every business is, yeah.
So at some point, we, we might have to have the hard conversations, because this is all arithmetic at the end of the day.
Sure.
If, if we wanna reduce the town budget even further.
Yeah.
Gotta talk about what is it that we are not going to. Or discontinue. We might have to get to that point.
It could be.
Depending on.
Yeah.
The magnitude it is. Okay, it's just how the numbers work, I mean.
Yeah, understood. Understood, but, but, but we're looking at a four point something million dollar surplus, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Also counting the four point.
I know.
Million dollars.
In the budget.
HVAC projects in the elementary schools and the PD, I shouldn't to keep the debt down. So if you don't do that.
Yeah.
Then you have the money.
Well, well, the, well, well, wait, well, wait, but the, but the, the, the one school budget is paid for with the COVID money, correct?
You still have, uh.
Two more.
About, and.
Right, but, but we heard that that one school is not gonna be completed till, it'll be started this summer. It's not gonna be completed till next summer. That's what we've been told. I heard that at the budget meetings.
Summer projects.
Yes, but, but so Griswold and Willard, uh, Griswold and Hubbard would go. Probably into the following fiscal year anyway, because if we can't even complete Willard. Within a year, i- in this next fiscal year, right? It starts, let's say it starts July first, it's not, not done till next July. That, the other two, I mean, we'll, we'll get going on them, but, and if we gotta bond a couple million to get them going, but I, I just don't see. Yeah, with construction costs the way they are, and I'm, I'm going with the, with the professionals, not me.
Yeah.
I'm going with the, um, you know, our experts. On the Public Building Commission telling me, good luck getting some of that equipment within a year. Certainly the switching equipment. That they need and all the other stuff they need. I mean, I mean, it's just. I, I've seen some construction projects at our company, and you can't get that stuff. The HVAC stuff is very hard to get, so. You know, it's just not gonna be ready anyway. Why would I put that, why would I encumber the budget with a, 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 a project that's not gonna start till the following fiscal year?
What I'm saying is don't double count it.
No, 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 I agree. No, I get, I get, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, you get to the elementary schools, then you don't have the surplus to pay for it, then you have to borrow it.
Well, you know what? If then we have to borrow it, then we will.
Okay.
We can always borrow. We're trying to get that number down, but, and there are. Many more projects coming online. Our revenue is up, what, two point five million, two point two million? So if it's up this year, not a lot of stuff is completed, it'll be up next year. More tax revenue means more things we could do. So I, yeah, I mean, listen. It's, it, it's a difficult decision, whatever we do. Nothing, it's not easy at all, but. I think we gotta try a little bit better, and Board of Finance, nothing against them, they work their hearts out. I was all, at all their meetings, it's brutal. Some of you folks were at their meetings. It's not easy, but I, I, I think, I'm opt, I'm always the optimist. I think we could get to a good place for everybody. For the Board of Ed, for the town, and for everything we need to do in the next fiscal year. I think we'll get there, cause we always have. So, that's what I think. All right, so what do we got? Take a vote? Motion to? Motion.
Motion to return the budget to the Board of Finance, have a joint meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you all very much. Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Thank you, folks. A good discussion, one we needed to have. Um, sorry it took so long. But there'll be another one now. We'll go to the Board of Finance and have another discussion. What else are we gonna do with our free time, right? This is, this is fun. Okay.
You wanna zip through the other stuff?
Yes, let's go.
Item number three.
Zip through it, yes.
Is, uh, scheduling a public hearing, the draft plan of conservation and development. The next council meeting, April eighteenth. You should have with you, um, the draft plan, the copies made, that, you, so that you can, something like that.
Yes, yes, yes.
A lot of work has gone into this, but, uh, other steps that we have to complete in terms of the public hearing, ultimately you approve it. But this is the next step. Get feedback from public, and then also be an opportunity to look at it, and. Then after that, there'll be a presentation with the O C D.
Yes, yes, sorry. A lot of paper here, a lot of paper here tonight. Yes, okay, so we wanna move for a public hearing. Do we have any comments on that? Are we comfortable moving forward with that one? I think we're all right.
I think just, I'd like to just make.
Yes, absolutely.
I was on planning and zoning before I became.
Yes, that's right.
And, uh, I was working with planning and zoning and our consultants on the plan of conservation and development.
Yes.
Um, they had many meetings, you know, they did their due diligence, they did a lot of work on it, um, and I just, I just wanna publicly acknowledge. Um, everybody who was, was part of that and for all the hard work that they put in. Um, Maureen kept us all on task. Um, sometimes had to wrangle us in, um, but it was, uh, I thought it was very. Uh, thorough project, very well thought out. It was great getting input from the different departments as well, so.
Good, appreciate those comments. Um, any other comments on this? Yeah, I know, that's not an easy thing to do, having been on planning and zoning myself for a bunch of years, that is not easy, so we appreciate that. So if there's nothing else, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to schedule a public hearing at seven P M. on the draft plan of conservation and development at the April eighteenth Town Council meeting.
You second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed? All right, so moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes. Yes. Yes, that's a good, that's a good idea.
Is there any land clearing in the plan?
Okay, um. Moving to the next agenda item. It's number four. Uh, this has to do with the waiving the town Berlin, town of Berlin purchasing requirement to increase the fiscal year. Spenditures for amount, Monaco Ford. Parts, he had approved earlier, the twenty-five thousand. And, um, our cars break and we had to buy more parts, and now it's gone over the twenty-five limit, and Mr. Simons is requesting. They're going with Monaco because they do have parts when we need it immediately, that to some of the other. Dealers around town, but they've been very responsive.
Okay. Comments, questions? If not, we're gonna take a motion.
Move to waive the town of Berlin purchasing requirements and increase the allowed expenditure amount fiscal year twenty twenty-three to thirty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. For the purchase of OEM Ford parts from Monaco Ford, if this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, so, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next two agenda items relate to the Skaglio Field. And the first one has to do with the, uh, sec, sending it to Planning and Zoning for an eight dash twenty-four review. I also want to mention the second one coming up, we're also asking you for a conditional approval to get started while they do the eight dash twenty-four. That's time sensitive. So I will have Jennifer and, uh. Steve here, we've been working on this project.
Did, did we miss? Five?
That's five.
The outdoor classroom?
Oh, yes.
But, five's the outdoor classroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I'm, I'm just cruising, sorry.
We appreciate your speed, but we just skipped over.
I gotta, thanks for keeping, uh, tabs on me. Outside classroom at McGee Middle School. I, I think Mr. Kugno, you're gonna talk about this?
Good evening, folks. Jeff Kugno, uh, Director of Operations for the Board of Ed.
Hi, Jeff.
Uh, this is, this is, this is a project that, uh, we've been working on for a while. Uh, we did a preliminary site plan review. It's an outside classroom. Um, for McGee, if you're staring at the big, in front of McGee. Uh, on the left-hand side, the lawn that's there, we wanna put a, a pad and a pavilion there for what is nowadays called an outside classroom. Uh, the classroom would be used by the, the blast class students, which are special ed students, and also the other students at McGee. Uh, as planned by the principal's office and the rest of the administrators. Um, it includes a, a pad and includes a pavilion. The size of the pad is about, or pavilion is about twenty-four by thirty. So it's sized going up that as the classroom is, um, it's used in a number of different ways. We have an engineer, one of the engineers that's on the, uh, the town's, um. A call list, AI engineers has provided us with site plan and engineering. Uh, we're getting an estimate for them right now. Uh, that's, it will be funded by two grants, the IDEA grant and the ARP grant, ARP Besser grant. Uh, and actually, we also have money from, uh, Marjorie Moore Fund, uh, for furnishings. So this is just a statutory review that has to be done. Maureen knows more about the basis of it as I, than I do, but. Uh, it has to be referred by the Town Council to the P and Z to review the project and do its, the, the eight twenty-four review as per statute. And then it actually comes back to the council again for approval. So the motion is, uh, naturally to refer it to, excuse me. We're to refer it to Planning and Zoning, uh, and, uh, move it back to the Town Council.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Um, any questions? We'll, we'll see this. Around again, so, no questions, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to refer to Planning and Zoning Commission for the section eight dash twenty-four review of the plan. For the Town Board of Education to develop and construct the outdoor classroom project at McGee Middle School.
Great, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a nice night, folks.
You too.
You too. Lucky, you're lucky you're home.
Exactly.
Peter, you're lucky you're on vacation. Anyway, trying to ruin tonight, though, from your vacation, so.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, good, we were successful. All right, next, I'm sorry.
Now we've moved to, uh, synthetic turf.
Now we're on number six.
Thank you.
I gotta watch you, Rocha, I gotta watch you, all right.
So, number six.
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um, the Skaglio Field is this other big project that we're doing with the deep grant that we got and awarded last year that we're moving forward on.
That's great.
Um, because we are converting the natural grass to synthetic turf surface, per the definition, it considers it a substantial improvement. So we do need to do an eight twenty-four review. We talked to Maureen, that meeting will be April twentieth, so we're gonna go to there. That's why their next agenda is asking for conditional approval. That's, that's basically a substantial improvement, which is why it requires it.
Yeah, and then we were lucky to get this grant from the state. Thank goodness. Hey, do you know, just a question, somebody was asking me this today. I don't know why this came up. Maybe they saw it on the agenda, I don't know. So, wh- when we approve this, I mean, I know we always need more fields, right? You know, are, are they, I, I know, and I know we're a little particular, as we should be. With Sage and the, you know, the football field, the cross field, where all our teams play, so we're. Protective of that field, as we should be for what we, you know, play on that and spend. Would this one be open a little bit more to different? Uh, town?
It would fall under the fee schedule. Anyone can call us and rent.
Okay.
We do rent skelies out to outside groups.
Yeah, I know you do that.
Follow the fee schedule.
Okay, okay.
Um, this would be the same. It wouldn't be locked up like skelies is, but it would still follow the same rental.
Okay.
Anyone would be able to rent it.
Good.
It's open.
Okay, and, and. Right, right. Yes, yes. Yeah.
We, we have no intention of blocking the facility out.
Yeah.
Skelies just have a lot more inside of the stadium to the bathroom.
Oh, sure, yeah, no. Oh, it's understandable there. I mean, I, I get being a little bit.
Over the past few years, Steve and I have really pushed people, especially youth groups and local groups, to use skelies more, to give our grass fields a chance to recover.
Oh, okay.
Even, so we love seeing people use the turf fields.
Okay, and this'll be great for this one. They'll be able to push the youth groups to them too, right? And, yeah, good. Okay, no, I just, it's good, that answers it. Any other questions, folks? Every now and then we'll take a motion on number six.
Move to refer the matter of converting Skaglio Field, Berlin High School to synthetic turf surface. Planning and zoning commission for section eight dash twenty-four review, as per the Connecticut general statutes.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? So moved. For seven.
Move forward with it, uh.
Yeah, you take.
I'm gonna say, wait, it's the same.
Same thing, yeah, we can do a motion on seven, it's the same.
When is the same one? You approve the project.
Seven, number seven, yes.
And the positive recommendation from Planning and Zoning.
Like that.
Okay, so you want the motion now?
Yes, yeah.
Move to authorize Town Manager. Rocha J. Record, and enter into a contract with H I Stone and Sun Incorporated. For the conversion of synthetic turf surface at the Skaglio Field and Berlin High School in an amount not to exceed. Two million, one hundred nineteen thousand dollars, which includes a hundred and four thousand dollars contingency amount, pending a positive recommendation. Of the Planning and Zoning.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, so moved. All right, thank you, have a good night. Thank you. And folks, you guys know, this is a, this was, this money, which is a lot of money, two million, is a grant from the state. Just so they understand we're not coming up with two million. I wish we could find two million.
All right.
Anyway, has to be for the field. Alright, number eight.
Number eight. Got some, uh, stuff coming from Public Works. This is a catch basin cleaning award. Board of a bid. You have it.
Really easy. Good day, good evening, folks.
We need easy now.
We, uh, put out a bid for the catch basin cleaning, uh, for this, uh, season. We got two bids, one with seventy-three, over seventy-three dollars a basin. Shaw Vac, which does it, which has been doing it for the last three to five years, I think, uh, was at twenty-six dollars and fifty cents per basin. Last year they were twenty-three, so they've gone up fifteen percent, but, uh, they're still, they still beat the other bidder. Um, so we want to get authorization to go ahead with them and. We have almost three thousand basins in town, so it's not a small task.
Wow.
They have sixteen, they have like seven trucks.
Right. Okay. Questions for Mike? Hearing none, service we need to do to keep our system and water flowing? Take a motion.
Move to approve utilizing Shaw Vac Services LLC of Plansville, Connecticut. For the purpose of catch basin cleaning. At the unit price of twenty-six dollars fifty cents per basin. Under contract number. Two zero two three dash nineteen. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second on that?
A second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Alright, so move.
Alright. Then the item number nine is refuse and recycling collection. Contract extension, um, Mike and Jim has done a lot of work on this. Some research, got some comparative pricing. And we want to, um. Extend the contract with some conditions, but I'll have Mike explain this to you, largely due to their superb, I think, excellent. Reputation they have and the service they already model, they have, um, went through the town for the last few years, so.
Right, and they service every one of your homes, so if you have any complaints, you should let us know right now.
Trashaway, oh, yeah, okay, now that's right, that's.
So the history here is. That's right.
It seemed to be five.
Trashaway, uh, reached out to us with, uh, a sort of an A and B proposal, either a three-year extension or a five-year extension. The, um, carrot, so to speak, was they would waive the cost of living increase for the first year either. Um, so we talked to a Roche, and Roche suggested we go back with a little bit of a, um, uh, asking for another offer. So Trashaway, um, Jim actually was talking to the owner of Trashaway and worked out. Deal where they would give us a five-year extension. First year, no cost of living increase. Every year after that, have a, a max of three percent. So inflation, if the inflation rate is six percent, they will cap their increase to three percent. If it's lower than three percent, we get the benefits, say it's two and a half or two percent, which may, may be unlikely, but, um, we would then get the benefit. So there's a cap on that. So after we've all talked about it, we think it's a good deal.
Hmm.
Um, you know Trashaway, they've been doing it in town for how many years, Jim? Five.
Wow, long time.
Also at a Roche's request, we benchmarked, and Jim Horrible and Lisa Canessa did a ton of research and actually looked, and in your agenda item, you can see the costs.
Yeah.
We're, or the town is very, it's, it's very well, um, positioned as far as cost go. We're in the lower end of the recycle, we're mid-range with the, the refuges. And when you look at the entire services that the, the residents get, they get bulky waste pickups, you know, three to four yards, they could pull every week. Transfer station, everything down there is free, you know, and I, I work, I live in a community where I'm paying for everything.
Yeah.
I don't get any of it, you know, so I'm thinking.
Pretty little.
Great deal for the resident.
Pretty lucky, yeah.
So why not extend? And some, uh, other municipalities, I think Cheshire. Cheshire did a seven-year extension with their hauler in two thousand nineteen. Think Newington renewed with Trashaway, um, in two thousand twenty-one for three years. So these multi-year extensions aren't unusual if you have a good provider and. Trashaway, as far as I'm concerned, we get very few complaints. And then when there's an issue, they jump on. So I think it's a, it's a good.
Mike, can I ask a quick question, Mike, if I can? Can you hear me?
Yep.
We got you, Dan.
Uh, they just do, uh, it's just trash, it's not the recyclable, correct?
No, it's both.
It's both that they do.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
They have, uh, seventy-one hundred accounts in town. And then they're doing refuse every week and then try, besides, you know, you know, recycling every two weeks, so is, how many stops? Ten thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, I know the. Solid waste disposal in the states and, and flux, they're changing everything around. If that goes up. Pressure doesn't absorb that, do they? We'd have to make up a different.
Pay the tipping fees of the wreck.
Ourselves.
So this is outside, that would be outside.
Deals on the collection.
Any other questions? No, okay. Um, take a motion on this?
Move to authorize a town manager, subject to the Corporation Council review, to enter into an agreement to extend. Both contract. Two zero zero nine dash ten, collection re-instruct and recyclable. Contract. Two zero zero nine dash eleven, collection of refuge. With Trashway Incorporated of New Britain, Connecticut. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Matter number ten.
Mike, you're still here? What the heck?
I know.
No, it's okay, no, I'm just kidding.
For re. Friction of town roadway for Public Works using, um. State of, I think, administrative services contract.
Uh, yeah, we're, uh, getting ready to pave and mill. And we're doing a lot of smaller roads this year, so as we have in previous years, you want to use what we call the state bid or the DAS contracts for both milling and paving. Um, they just actually came out, Kate was allowed me to slide this agenda in, uh, item at the last minute, thank you. Uh, because we want to get paving, we, we should be paving, I think, early May this year, we want to get rolling because we're doing a lot of side streets.
Yeah.
We've got that three-road project doing the main roads.
Right, right, yeah.
We're gonna focus on maybe some of the forgotten streets this year, you know, that people have been complaining about, but we're like, oh, we gotta do this other main road.
Oh, good.
This is.
Yeah.
Thousand cars a day, you know?
Sure.
So we're asking to use the DAS contracts for milling and paving.
Great.
Question, is this related to the list that we provided to us, I think, at the last meeting with the roads that were scheduled?
Yes.
Is that what this is for?
Yes.
Okay.
Contracts on the town.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I didn't know if this was in addition to, okay.
This is how we get it.
Thank you.
And didn't, didn't we a few years ago do a twenty-year plan on our roads? Was it a twenty-year we did? Ten? It was a ten-year. Right, plan, member for repaving roads? Huh?
Not, not in my time.
It might have been before you. No? I thought we did a twenty-year plan.
Looking at multi-year, because now that we have the street scan, um.
Okay, okay.
Which are all the red roads in town that need to be paved, you know, right now, so. We'll probably be gonna looking at a multi-year program. This year, we're gonna just get, take, take care of some of the roads that have been really.
Yeah, no, no, that's good.
And then sort of start planning out with the budget, where Roche, Kevin worked through how much we can spend every year. And then roll it out, because I think people need to know if they're not on this year, and I, and we did it in Wilton, when I worked in Wilton, we did a five-year.
Okay.
Actually had the budget laid out, so I'd like to do that. Because then people would know, at least if it's not gonna be done this year, when is it gonna be done? That's what we always get questioned about.
Sure.
Lay that out, then people would feel better. Can survive another year and then we'll pave their.
I could swear we did that.
At one time, we had a ten-year, because we got, we have roughly a hundred miles of road.
Yeah.
The plan was to do ten miles every year.
Right.
And they were bonding about two million dollars a year to do that.
Ah. Huh?
That's where the bonding went.
Some of it to the roads, but it didn't seem like a lot of them improved very much for the two million or whatever they bonded.
Ten years.
Yeah.
Was under a previous administration.
Yes, yes. Out of that. That's from several years ago. Ten years ago, yeah, okay.
There's still actually money left, but it's, it's really not, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Speak about.
Yeah.
Still have the account, the bonded, uh, restoration, uh, road restoration account open, so it still hasn't been completely zeroed out.
Yeah, okay.
Kevin will be doing that, I think, soon, but, uh, we're at the end of that.
Yeah, okay, no, that's great, appreciate it. Okay, now we need to pave some roads, we know that, so, uh, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve utilizing the state contract department administration services contract number. Two-two PS X zero one nine six. And two-two PS X zero one nine seven. For the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Construction season for the purpose of reconstructing and paving roads.
Thank you. Second on that? Any other comments or questions? Or Mike, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Alright, so moved.
You very much.
You done? You can't stay. Want you to stay? Want you to stay till the end of the meeting, we're almost there. Ah, there you go, I like that. That's all good stuff. That's all good. Okay, where are we at? Oh, well, we're at the, uh, we just had added that agenda item, right, to vote on us, so we have a. Application from, uh, John Dykem, um, he had applied a couple of times, he is interested in the, um. Planning and zoning commission, and he does have experience with that, um. He actually does some of the meetings, he's a attorney for the city of New Britain, he lives in Berlin, now moved to Berlin about a year or two ago, bought a house and. Is interested in getting involved here, and that's his expertise is planning and zoning, so we have an alternate spot open if. We can, uh, uh, ask for a nomination, open the nominations.
I'll nominate him.
Okay, thanks. Um. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations, all in favor of Mr. Dykem? Aye.
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 Alright, welcome to.
Madness.
Planning and zoning commission, I hope he knows what he's getting into, but I know he does.
Excuse me.
Alright, Mr. Roche.
Right. Just getting warm, getting warmed up.
Yes.
I'm sick, can we move along here? Oh, my god.
Look good now.
Yeah. Amazing what a little blush can do for you.
Alright, so, um, some quick updates. Today, we had a good meeting with the, um. To discuss the PD pension, we got the draft.
Oh, yes, oh, great.
Thirty-page document, we got four pages of questions, but we were able to, you know, sit and go through them.
Okay.
Leadership of the union. Devin, Paul, and myself. We'll just put them together now, send it to the attorneys.
Yeah.
And once they get the draft, we'll send it to everyone, including the ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
Uh, you have the current draft, but it.
Yes.
Still needs.
It's, yeah, it needs a lot of.
I mean, these are, the, it's in good shape, but there are technical questions and.
Excellent.
Definitions and all we have to think about. Um, so we'll keep that going and as soon as we have the next one, we'll.
So go back to them, they'll fill in, the attorneys will fill it out based upon what you guys thought about, and then it could come back.
It's about.
It, yeah, it wasn't, it was.
Yeah, it, it needs to be spelled out.
Yeah, sure.
Document.
Of course.
Um, the time, duration, how long, much time do you give, how much time you give at the other end?
Right.
Uh, all those things, and they were easy conversations.
Yeah, okay, good.
On the same page to try and get this done.
Yeah, please, yeah, we gotta get that done.
So, um.
We'll get recruit.
Yep, so that's one.
Um, thank you.
We had it in the, um. Berlin Citizen, but we also put it on our town website and Facebook page and Civic Ready. The, uh. Enforcement, the leash ordinance is.
Ah, yes.
Beginning April first.
Oh, right, because we had the, kind of the six-month.
One year.
Oh, it was a one-year waiting time, yeah.
Time flies, right?
Yes, it does.
So, um. First thirty days, we'll give a written warning. Then after that, uh, we'll be, um, actually issuing, um, the, uh. It's sort of say. So that people will start. Doing their dogs on a leash. Right, I mean, over a year is, you know.
My neigh- neighbor yelled at me. About, about, uh, walking his dog off leash and, uh, he backs up to bicentennial park.
Oh.
A- and, and his dog is elderly, so I don't, I don't really, but, but one of our animal control folks were there, which was good, and he just said, what, what, what did that change? I said, ah, you know, it's been two years. Paid attention to it. He wanted off leash, go to Pistol Creek, but I mean, he was okay with it, but, yeah.
Yeah. So this. One, then what the issue would be. The normal infraction, it's a hundred dollars.
Is that what it is? Okay.
And then, um.
They give like a couple of warnings first, maybe? I know they've been given warnings, but one warning.
Warning, but then now we'll give to written warning.
A written warning, okay, gotcha, okay.
After the, after May first, we'll start issuing.
Okay.
So, uh, infractions and. For enforcement, the copy will be sent to New B- New Britain Superior Court.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, we have no enforcement powers.
Oh, gotcha.
Then collecting it, we send it them and they deal with the New Britain Courts.
Okay. Good, that's great.
Who gets the money? Uh, who gets the money? They get, no?
Animal Control?
Oh, no.
Who?
Britain. Britain.
Britain.
Oh. Really?
So it works like this, the courts are there, we don't have a court. So.
Well, that's not right.
Well.
Donna, you gotta change that, Donna.
I guess so. Nothing on the deal.
Yeah, okay. I get it. No, I get it. Yeah, 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 really. Get, get us, get us some money, yeah.
For the.
Yeah, yeah, please. Money. Yes.
The news, the, we applied few months ago, the neglected cemetery.
Oh, yes.
And a thousand dollars, we got it.
Oh, great. Oh, good.
So we just.
Good. Excellent.
Paperwork and, uh, after that, you know, we can start fixing some of those.
Good. Great.
Which is great, I think. James, to me, I talked about the budget referendum signs. So as soon as we finished, uh, well, we can, we could start posting it without the numbers, uh, on the citizen. We're gonna put it on the town, um, Facebook.
Yeah.
And Civic Ready. Uh, so that give the word out to everyone, regardless of the number, there'll be a referendum, so.
Yeah, right, right, the referendums.
In a couple of days.
Yeah.
We're thinking maybe weeks before.
That's what I'm thinking. If it's too far ahead, people don't.
Forget about it.
Forget about it, they won't even read the sign. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that.
I, I, I don't, I could take you next door to the server room, but I have these.
I saw the picture of that rack, yes.
So, I don't ask me or explain the technical.
Yeah, I was looking at that. It's a beautiful-looking rack.
It's right here. A lot of this work was done by Brian and his.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Keep the cost down.
Yeah.
A hundred percent complete. That's not the server. That's the. So that's rated all complete.
Oh, great.
And it was a huge, you know, you ask, sometimes you ask yourself, what keeps you up at night? This is one that kept me up at night, just came here, find out it's in something years old and have all our.
Everything's on it.
Apparel, everything on it.
Time for an upgrade, yeah, good.
We're good for the next few years.
Excellent.
Eight will be happy all year. All your land will be on someone else.
Yeah.
All licenses, yes.
Yeah.
That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do. You did. Special Committee reports, we don't have any, right? I don't believe.
No.
Moving, right? No.
Moving right along.
Just, I'll send a reminder that fine gentleman for the ordinance committee, they were gonna give some feedback to us.
Yes.
But there's nothing, so I'll, I'll remind them to.
Maybe do it. Yes.
Back so that.
Okay. Good. Excellent.
Need again.
Council Communications, anything exciting?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter for those of you that celebrate it this coming weekend.
Appreciate it. Yes, you too, Donna.
Not too much candy. Thank you.
Oh, well, it's, it's sort of a candy too, I guess. I maybe not really.
And I believe the lead, the, the Legion is doing a fundraiser on Friday evening. They do a pancake breakfast thing with Bunny, and they'll be selling baked goods. So I think that anybody that can get out there, it's a fun thing. They did it, first time last year they did it, it was really well-received. To go out and support our Legion. They can use it for their building improvements.
That's great. It's a good cause, good breakfast, good food.
Mm-hmm.
Friday.
Dinner night, it's dinner night breakfast, though. It's not Good Friday. It's, you know, it's, I think, four-thirty it starts.
Oh, it starts that early?
Breakfast for dinner.
Does it start four-thirty?
Yeah, yeah.
Gotta be there early, because be hungry.
Yeah.
Yeah, pancakes and eggs. It's a form.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, anyone else? What do we got? Anything else, Donna? We're good?
We're good. I mentioned the couple of grants, and I'll continue to look for whatever I can get my hands on. And push your way. I usually have Bobby send a Roche something, or I talk to you, Mark, about it, and we'll see what happens. That's it.
Appreciate it.
When will we know when the joint meeting ends?
Yes, that, that is a good question. That was a question I had.
Do you have a date?
Um.
You can ask.
I don't know. Next, I'll start looking at next week sometime, or if folks are around. Yeah, we need to get it done.
I'm not available today.
Okay, let's, I'm trying to. Next week, when, Wednesday?
I mean, I'm open right now, Lord knows, but I can always zoom if I have to.
Okay.
I mean, I'll physically be better, but I don't know, because we're in session. They tell us at the last minute, so.
Does it matter? So if we move it to Thursday, you know, it doesn't matter. Thursday?
We have a commitment on Thursday, Mark.
Oh, yes, we do.
So.
Okay, so, alright, silly me.
That's okay.
Yes, that's right. Wednesday, folks? Donna, good? Donna, Donna? Donna, Donna?
Yeah, yeah. No, Wednesday, Wednesday works for me.
Six-thirty or seven? Six-thirty?
Yeah, earlier is better, yeah.
Six-thirty?
Sure.
Well, we gotta.
You gotta check with them first, yes, right.
Send an email, six-thirty. Tell them they better be there.
As of back, it's Thursday, because they can't meet on Wednesday.
I don't know about Thursday. I'm not sure about that.